Everyone's in place. Good evening, everyone. At this time, we will convene the December 13th, 2022, City Council Successor Agency Meeting at 7:00. And if we could have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Councilmember Ray?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Bryant?
Here.
If you could join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, we will open public comments. And I'll turn it to you, Margaret.
We'll take public comments in the council chambers, followed by Zoom public comments. If you're in person, please file a speaker's card with the city clerk on the form provided on the counter at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom during this item to speak under public comment. At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Items listed under informational reports are on the consent calendar. Request for future agenda items, new request. Please save your comments for any other items that are on the agenda for that part of the meeting, especially related to our outgoing and incoming council members when you'll have the opportunity to provide them. Written comments submitted prior to the meeting are made available on the City Council Agenda's webpage. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. While we encourage your comments, state law prevents the city council from discussing items that are not on their meeting agenda. And if appropriate, staff will follow up on them directly. I have some speaker cards. I'll go ahead and start with Sarai Espinoza.
...underwin. And I hope you all, together, continue the work that many have started. I hope you continue to work hard to create an amazing Brentwood that we all love and enjoy, a community that serves all. Best of luck to the entire council.
Thank you. The next speaker is Danny Doorman.
Good evening, everyone. And I'm sorry for laughing. I was sitting next to someone. I said, please don't call me next. And son of a gun. So I'll keep it short for a change. I want to thank the council for everything you've done so far. Certainly not perfect, but a lot of lessons learned in 2022. And hopefully, those lessons learned will be positive for 2023. As you can see, I think there are more people here than are on the phone normally. So that really should say a lot about what we feel is in the best interest of Brentwood. And for Karen, I remember when I first interviewed you. And it's been an amazing journey. And I guess we'll see something in 2024, unless, of course, you move. So hopefully, you won't be able to sell your home. You'll be here. And we'll see what we see. So thank you all.
The next speaker is Andrea Frayler.
Well, hello, council. I'm Andrea Frayler. I'm the Community Library Manager of the Brentwood Library. And I'm so happy to be here and see your faces in person. I think this is an exciting time. Really want to thank council for all your support of the Brentwood Library. I'm excited for what to see what's in the future and looking forward to meeting new council and providing an update in January or February, hopefully. You know, your support means a lot, and it shows. The Brentwood community loves their library. The Brentwood Library finished third in Summer Reading Finishers in all of the county this year. And we're currently the fifth highest circulating library in Contra Costa County. So thank you for your support. You built a beautiful library, and it is truly valued and appreciated. So thank you, council.
The next speaker is Judy Reinheimer.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak up. My name is Judy Reinheimer, and I'm just a resident, just a resident, of Central Park Place, which is in Somerset 1. And tonight, I would just like to draw attention to my questions and concerns regarding the tentative, I guess is the word I want to use, closure of the Diablo Valley, excuse me, Diablo Course Golf Course. I happen to live on the golf course, and I'm concerned about a couple of issues. I realize it's a private course, but there are concerns about living in a gated community and what the definition of open space will be for that space. In your packet, I pulled out the map, and the area that's marked in red is part of the Somerset 1 sections of the Diablo Golf Course. So it's quite a bit of space. And what happens to that space as private land if it is formally closed? And so my concern will be, will the public be allowed to use the golf course cart path? And the other concern is those trees that are on the golf course in their deteriorating condition, if they start to fall onto our property, if it's private land and it's still golf course-owned, what happens then to the liability or the repairs? And just public access? Will we have individuals coming in through our gated community? Others can speak to the golf course itself. I am a member of the Ladies Golf Group, but others are going to speak about their concerns. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Karen Anderson.
Good evening. So I'd like to follow up some of the comments from Judy. Specifically, I have some questions that I have specifically raised with the city council and the city manager and heretofore have not received answers concerning, how Measure Q will impact the closure of the Diablo Golf Course and any future plans for the Diablo Golf Course? Specifically, I have four questions with respect to Measure Q. How does a zoning request qualify for Measure Q? And that would be a change of zoning request. Who can request that change in zoning? Does it have to be the current property owner? Can it be a party considering purchase of the property? Could it be a party who has entered into a contract conditional on the change in zoning? Can they request the change under Measure Q? How much detail would any applicant, under any of those above circumstances, have to provide to request that change in zoning? And what amount of that information specifically would be available to the public? And then, if it gets to the point where the zoning request becomes a ballot measure, does that have to wait till the next general election? Or can there be a special election called? And then lastly, are there any circumstances under Measure Q where a zoning request change could be made, and it did not become a ballot measure? So I'd like to see those answers somewhere in the public record with respect to how Measure Q will actually play out, both for the Deer Ridge closure, which is in effect, and the possible closure of Diablo. Thank you very much.
Margaret, before we take further questions, if we could have the city manager or someone from staff answer some of these concerns. We definitely want both Ms. Anderson and Ms. Reinheimer. I'd like to make sure that they have all their concerns met. We may not be able to get that in depth tonight right here, but we definitely want to address these. So if you could address some of these concerns right now.
We are equally concerned with the announced closure of the Diablo Course. And the city has a vested interest in the residents' quality of life and satisfaction out in those neighborhoods. The city has been in contact with the golf course owner and have an understanding that he intends to schedule a town hall with all the residents that could be impacted by the closure. And that has not yet been set. So we encourage residents to contact the private owners and try to get that scheduled. And we'll collaborate and attend that meeting if that gets scheduled. Measure Q is new and fresh, and we're still learning all of its full implications. But my understanding is that there is residential allowed in the zoning of that golf course area. And any changes of a rezone would have to go to a ballot, whether that's paid by the applicant of that rezone request. They could do a special election. They could do a general election. That could be at their timing request to have that occur. So a lot of nuances. We would love to visit with the residents directly and help clarify any further questions in a lot more detail than we can do tonight.
Thank you very much. Margaret?
The next speaker I have, card I have, is for Jane Fontas.
Hi, my name is Jane Fontas. I live in Somerset 3 and play golf at the Brentwood Golf Club. So I'm falling into the categories that I'm hearing now. And one of the questions that Judy touched on was maintenance. What is required for maintenance on a closed golf course? And so it has to do with, are there specifics? When does the grass have, how often does grass have to be mowed? Or in this case, it'll be weeds? Will the area be just what is now green? Or will it go up the sides, which is golf course property, before it gets to the homeowner's property? What about dead trees? Will it cut them down? What happens if they fall down if he hasn't done that? The other things are the cart paths, not only within Somerset 1, which is where Diablo is, but the bridges over because a number, that's the only way you can get between Somerset 1 and the other Somerset's if you don't drive a car. So if he chooses to close those off, that will have a big impact, especially on those who no longer drive. And lastly, the rain made me think of this. Mosquitoes and potential West Nile with stagnant ponds, of which there are many. Those become mosquito breeding places. I don't know if that is the golf course job for that mitigation or if it's the city job who does, like mosquito abatement and stuff like that. So we all have a lot of concerns. That's it. Oh, I have one other question. Can we get a copy of the regulations for closed golf courses? I mean, is there something like that? Since Deer Creek closed, I'm guessing you've addressed some of this before and have it written down as a regulation. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional speaker cards for public comment. I do have a number for the presentations recognizing the outgoing council members. Rod, go ahead.
Hi. Sorry about the confusion. I did put in a card. Looks like the button is over here now. So in case anybody wants that to go up and down. I don't have a prepared comment for the first comment tonight. I wanted to come up here with a couple of minutes and take a look around and appreciate the modifications that have been made to the chamber. I think it's been worth the wait. I was thinking I'd have to go home tonight and watch it on YouTube to see how the cameras are doing. But I can see right up there that the cameras are excellent compared to what was in here before. So props to the AV people and to everybody else who worked on this and worked so hard to get it going. It's really, it's really something to see. It's also something to see you guys finally up on the daze, some of you, for the first time. And it's really, after, gosh, two years, it's really something just to be able to come up here and talk to you in person. I really appreciate the opportunity. I have been hearing some of the other comments from the folks at Somerset. I did want to point out that I live on the 14th Fairway in Deer Ridge. Pretty familiar with what goes on over there at Deer Ridge and would be happy to speak with any of those people if they want to find out what those of us who live in Deer Ridge have been going through, how we're dealing with the golf course closure, what options they have. And yeah, the only thing that's weird about this is seeing myself up there is kind of distracting. But it's really cool. And I'll be back to speak on Item D1. Thank you.
I have no additional speaker cards in person. I will go ahead and move on to Zoom. I do have one hand raised in Zoom. Concepcion James? Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. Good evening, distinguished Brentwood council members and city leadership. My name is Concepcion James, and I'm a resident of Brentwood's Rose Garden neighborhood. And I'm also Chair of United Latino Voices of Contra Costa. I'm here tonight to thank and honor Johnny Rodriguez for his leadership over the past four years as a Brentwood council member and as the current vice mayor. Johnny and his family have dedicated their lives to improving our community so that we can thrive in a safe, family-oriented, and forward-thinking city. For the sacrifice of his time, his leadership, and for his perseverance, I am very grateful. Johnny, you are my and our community's role model. Gracias. Thank you for all you have done and all you will do. Best of luck with your future endeavors. We cannot thank you enough, Johnny, for giving of yourself, not only through your council work, but also through your work with One Day at a Time. Thank you so much, Johnny, for everything you've done for us.
The next speaker in Zoom is Holly Bishop. Holly, go ahead. Holly, can you unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, city council. And congratulations to Pat Nisha and Tony. Thank you, Johnny, for your service. Sorry for not attending in person as I have a sick family member. I have a small request. When I ran for city council, I brought to light the chromium-6 water issue, which the state is not fixing. Again, I have said this numerous times, the problem lies with the state. And I personally would like to thank the great staff who spent hours with me. I really appreciate everything you have done. First, I would request the city to continue going above and beyond what the state requires. I'm requesting chromium-6 be tested and added to the yearly water quality report. Again, thank you for the staff for testing it this year at my request. Second, since we are watering our parks with recycled water that does have chromium-6 in it, 0.18 to be exact, I would like soil samples from three parks where children readily play, Garan Creekside and the park at the end of Balfour. Some may believe you can expose yourself to chromium-6 unless ingested or working in manufacturing, which is correct. But my concerns lie with the continual water of a source with chromium-6 and the possible contamination for future generations. You can't pull water from a source that has chromium-6 in it. If levels are high, to research graphene oxide options in recycled water only, because in my opinion, reverse osmosis is not the way to go. As for every five gallons, it wastes three gallons to get two gallons of pure water. Third, I can't believe I'm going to say this, turn off the wells. This is where chromium-6 levels are high with a range of 4.6 to 6.7. EPA says healthy levels are 0.02. And I know the state is fighting for a level of 10. And we can use a baseline and an example of Hinkley where those people got stomach cancer and became ill. It's a backup. We only use 20% of our water from wells anyway. Figure out how to fix our well issue. I also know we have wells turned off due to high nitrates. Let's concentrate on fixing the wells and using them as an emergency source. Lastly, I'm going to ask council to remove Jovita Mendoza from the right to vote on the chromium-6 matter as she stated her opinion on the water matter before it went to the agenda on social media. Post, she said, "I had misinformation, and making her friend for providing correct information was not correct." She must then have reviewed the information, found out I was in fact correct, and then wanted to switch the agenda to Measure Q, when in fact, she was speaking about Measure Q and the water. Screenshots have been provided to staff. Jovita also violated a Brown Act, which is interesting, as she says she follows all the rules. You know, I could really push the matter if I wanted to because saying, "I, quote, lack comprehensive skills" was not on the agenda from what I know. And from what I know about the Brown Act, you can only respond to items on the agenda. So either my comprehension skills were honorably on the agenda.
The speaker's timer had expired. I have no additional hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comments. And we will move into informational reports from council members, committees, liaison, and staff. And this is going to take some getting used to. Let's start at my right tonight. It's a member of Mendoza.
No problem. So continuing on the Our Neighborhood Voices initiative so that our city can have control, not just our city, but all cities and charter cities can have control of their own land use and zoning. So that is every single Wednesday night. Everyone is welcome to attend. If anyone wants to know how to get there, you just go on arneighborhoodvoices.com, and there is a Zoom link for Wednesday nights. Every Sunday night, I attend an elected meeting for any like-minded people on land use. So attended those on Sunday night. We've actually agreed that we probably are going to start talking about each other's issues that come up. And maybe we can help each other out and learn from each other's different projects that they have in their cities when it comes to land use. A ton of resident calls this week. Garbage, sideshows, soccer complex, a parent from Freedom High School that I refer to the school board. So it's great of residents recalling. I appreciate it. Like I said, I like the good and the bad. And always come and let us know what you think. That's important. Attended a retirement event for Congressman McNerney. Attended the Planning Commission meeting. Spoke to Amy at the Downtown Brentwood Coalition, and they're hiring for interns. So if you have a college student who's interested in marketing or anything along those lines, they are hiring for an intern. It's a great organization. So you can reach out to the Downtown Brentwood Coalition. And then also, six leadership meetings, some leadership team for Our Neighborhood Voices. So attended those meetings as well. And that is it for, oh, actually, there was a water issue also that you guys are following up on, and we're going to meet with the residents. So all of those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yeah, I really don't have a lot to report back. I did want to mention the parade, well done by the chamber and the residents. Also, the tree lighting. It was really nice to meet and be able to spend some time with the new council members and their families and also current council members. So once again, beautiful events, and that's all I have to share for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since the last time we met, I attended the Hot Coco with the Cops and the Grinch. And we actually had Santa come and join us. And so Santa was making sure the Grinch was behaving and making sure that the chief was behaving as well. So I attended that. And also, the Tunnel of Joy over on La Costa is going in full swing again. Beautiful displays, great outpouring of people coming to see it. If you're not familiar with it, each year, they choose somebody, a community member, that is in need. And they help raise money for this individual. This time, it is a young man who had, he had a tumor on his kidney, and I think, believe it was stage four. So they are raising money for him. And you can go, it's Christian, but it's, if you go there, they'll have Venmo signs that you can just screenshot it and donate that way. So I hope that you'll get out there and do that. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilperson Meyer?
Thank you. Attended the Planning Commission meeting and had some interactions with constituents, including some bullying concerns at Heritage, which I'll be connecting to the school board. And also with some Somerset residents about the golf course and trying to make some connections there to help with getting those answers. Attended the Somerset Singer's Holiday Choir Concert, Country Christmas. It was heartwarming and inspiring and just really wonderful to be around a lot of people in a really special celebratory way. That was nice. Also, had a meeting with the Cal Cities representatives to discuss facilitation of some of the new mayors and council members sessions for the January conference. And I will be offering introductory remarks as the president of the Mayors and Council Members Department and also facilitating a land use session. And more as we go. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Since the last time we met, I attended a candlelight vigil in Oakley for Alexis Gabe. I'm sure most of us are familiar with the Gabe family and what happened to Alexis. And so it was very well attended by a lot of the families from both Brentwood and Oakley. And I just want to appreciate all of our residents for everything that you've done to help the Gabe family during this terrible circum- And I just want to appreciate all of our residents for everything that you've done to help the Gabe family during this terrible circumstance. I also attended the transplant meeting as far as an ECRFA meeting, a BART and State Route four bypass authority meeting. All of those were dealing with expansion and the preparation for future impacts of the traffic that we're dealing with out here on a constant basis. Also, I attended Congressman Jerry McNerney's appreciation gathering as well. And just in case anyone from his office is paying attention, he has just been an absolute hero for Brentwood and Contra Costa County. There are very few electeds that work as tirelessly for as long as he did without regard of any personal accolades. And so it's just been a pleasure working with Congressman McNerney. And we're genuinely going to miss him. Also, I attended the holiday parade, the mayor's conference, which met for the first time, not dissimilar to us in a couple of years in person in Richmond. And got to be informed about some of the potential of bringing a ferry that is in the process, early talks, but a ferry going into Pittsburgh and potentially Antioch. So that's something to stay informed about. I think that'd be very helpful and interesting. As well as a Habitat Conservancy meeting and a Tri Delta meeting. And that's all I have to report at this time. So at this time, we will.
Mayor?
Yes?
Staff have two updates for you.
Please.
In follow up to the golf course discussion, we will go ahead and put out a post on our Facebook page tomorrow by the end of day that provides that zoning code reference. So all the residents can access that and see that immediately. And then want to turn a moment over to Chief Herbert to provide an update on the recent sideshow issues that we had in the community. Chief?
Thank you, Tim. Honorable Mayor, City Council, as you know, we had a fairly large sideshow event on the morning of December 4th, about 2:30 in the morning. To put this in perspective, this was a fairly large, well coordinated sideshow event that was two days. Started Friday and ended on Saturday. This group called this the Cup Event in honor of the World Cup. And Friday night, they hit San Francisco, Oakland and Tracy. And then on Saturday night, they came over to this part of the county, starting in Pittsburgh, moved their way through Antioch. Then they tried to form a sideshow on Lone Tree Way where we were able to disperse them before they formed. And they moved on back to Pittsburgh and then later established a sideshow at Sand Creek and the bypass. These events are very disturbing to our community. I understand that. But when we have 100 plus vehicles with people discharging firearms into the air and four police officers and one sergeant to handle it, it's not safe for the officers and it's not safe for the community as a whole. So once we had requested mutual aid from neighboring agencies, we were only able to get four Contra Costa County sheriffs and one CHP officer to assist with us. Once that group did show up, it gave us a little bit more numbers to be able to start pushing them in a direction where they finally decided to break up and leave. In the past, when we've tried to tackle these events with smaller numbers of officers, we receive pushback via frozen water bottles, rocks, thrown at patrol cars. We've had an officer injured. So it's a very delicate balance between public safety, officer safety when we deal with these events. Again, these groups are very well coordinated. They run counter surveillance with drones. They send out scouter cars into the communities to find out where they're going to set up next. So regionally, our best effort for agencies our size between this part of the county is to prevent them before they form. Once they form, it's a little more difficult to deal with until we get officers on scene. So we are having a meeting tomorrow, a regional wide meeting to help address how we as a group collectively in law enforcement will be dealing with these moving forward. And again, our best effort is to prevent them. We have a very well connected, using open source media and our regional partners are all on a big email chain. So we alert anybody when one is forming in our area to let everybody know in the region that this is occurring. And we do our best to try and have extra staff on for these events. But again, I know this is concerning for the community and we do our best. But there is a delicate balance between public safety and the safety of the officers and safety of the community. The last thing we want to do is have an unintended consequence of a citizen get hit by a fleeing vehicle who's trying to prevent from getting arrested and getting their vehicle towed. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But for now, that's the best update I can give you. As far as citations or no citations at night and no vehicles towed, there are investigative efforts that we are working on and there are laws that help us on the backend post event that will assist us in getting some of these participants' vehicles towed after the fact. But they, again, now they're starting to take counter measures to prevent us from being able to do that. So like I said, we are, we're working with our regional partners and trying to do our best to prevent these from happening.
Thank you, Chief. I know that this was very upsetting for everyone, but this is a regional issue. I know that at a regional level, there are, there are things that are taking place that potentially will dissuade this kind of behavior in the past from coming out, in the future from coming out in this direction. So at this time, we will move into consent calendar. Do I have a motion for the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a first.
Second.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? It is unanimous. Okay, we'll move into business items. Item C1, Independent Auditor's Report and Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2021-22. And the Report on Financial Awards Received by the City. And Carrie Breen, Christine Andrews and Sonia Agostini will present this.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. We're going to have Sonia Agostini, Accounting Manager, on the opposite end of the room over there do the presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of the City Council. Tonight, we are presenting the city's 2021-22 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report along with the results of the city's annual financial audit. Shortly, I will turn the presentation over to Amy Meyer with Mays and Associates to present the audit results directly to you. But first, I would like to provide a brief overview of the prior year's financial results. For the year ended June 30, 2022, the city's general fund reported solid financial results. During the pandemic, the federal government enacted a series of unprecedented actions in an effort to protect the economy from financial upheaval. The resulting economic activity led to strong gains in the city's property tax and sales tax revenues. Additionally, development revenue unexpectedly came in 1.2 million over budget as developers pulled a large number of permits just before the end of the fiscal year in an effort to avoid the annual July 1st fee increase. This really is just a timing issue in revenues and we do expect development revenue to be 1.2 million short in the current year as a portion of the budgeted permits have already been pulled. In addition to strong revenues, the city also realized savings from budgeted expenditures and personnel vacancies. After allocating funds for strategic initiatives, the general fund finished the year with an operating surplus of $1.2 million. This surplus has been transferred to the Budget Stabilization Fund per City Council's policy. And one half of that amount will be used to pay down unfunded pension liabilities. Currently, the Budget Stabilization Fund balance is $14.2 million or about 21% of the general fund expenditures. This fund will provide a source for the payment of future pension and retiree medical cost increases, which are coming in the next few years. At year end, the unassigned reserve in the general fund was 21 million equal to 30% of the annual budgeted expenditures. The city's wastewater and solid waste enterprise funds generated revenues in line or higher than was projected in the rate study, while the water enterprise revenues slowed as usage has declined during drought conditions. Throughout the pandemic, the city also had collection efforts on past due accounts limited by state law. However, over the last six months, past due balances have declined significantly through the efforts of staff to secure direct state funding and grants along with establishing a variety of payment plan options that were utilized by the citizens of the city. Finally, the city's replacement funds continue to be funded at levels that keep the city well positioned to be able to do the needed replacements of infrastructure and assets in the future. While the focus of this agenda item is the financial results of the prior fiscal year, next month, staff will be coming forward to council in their mid-year budget update and will provide more current financial information during that update. Tonight, we are also pleased to present you with the annual financial awards that are received by the city over the past 12 months. These include the Award for Excellence in Capital Budgeting received from the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers for the 2021-22 VIP or Capital Improvement Program. And the Excellence in Financial Reporting Award received from the Government Finance Officers Association for the 2020-21 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Recognition of the city's adherence to the highest standards of government reporting is very important as it can impact our ability to obtain favorable financing through the capital markets as well as providing the public the assurance that the city's resources are protected. In concluding this portion of the presentation, I would like to thank the council for their continued support as well as finance staff who put a great deal of effort into preparing the annual report. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Amy Meyer, the partner in charge of the audit from Mays and Associates to present the independent audit results.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So an audit is an independent verification, I should start the meeting. We have three reports, as Sonia has mentioned, we have the ACFIR, our Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, Memorandum on Internal Control and the Required Communications. Those documents should be in your packet. And when I make page references tonight, it'll be to your agenda packet in case you want to see that, not to the report page. Hopefully that'll help you. So an audit is an independent verification that the city's financial statements are materially correct or fairly present the financial position of the city's funds. So we opine on the city's basic financial statements that are included in the financial report. And that's what we call the middle part of the report. The report is comprised of an introductory section, basic financial statements in the middle, which start with our audit opinion and the statistical section on the backend. So we opine on that beginning part. We do not audit the introductory or the statistical section. So the basic financial statements include the entity-wide financial statements that are on pages 160 and 161 that show all of the city's assets and liabilities consolidated into two columns, governmental activities and business type activities. Business type activities are all of your enterprise funds, your water, your sewer, your garbage, those enterprise funds. And then governmental activities is everything else. So those are the two columns that are in the report. And we also opine on what are called major funds individually and non-major funds in aggregate. What decides something that's a major fund? The general fund is always considered a major fund. And then there's a mathematical calculation that determines the other funds and whether they are elevated to that level of reporting. And then all of the other funds that are in the report are in the back in the combining sections. And so that's when we call that the non-majors in aggregate. We opine on those in total. And so the major funds can be seen on pages 162 for the governmental funds and page 166 for the enterprise funds. So our audit was conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States as well as government auditing standards. So you may notice if you were to look at last year's report compared to this year's report for our audit opinion, there was a change in the format this year due to new auditing standards. So the opinion itself, you know, what we're giving it as opinion didn't change, but the verbiage in the report did change. Reordered a little bit to clarify, or excuse me, to add additional disclosures of management's and our responsibilities with respect to the financial statements. So again, we audit the ACFIR. We also, when needed, audit the city if it expends more than $750,000 in federal award programs in any one year. But the city did not make expenditures to that level. So there's no what we call single audit this year or federal award audit. The city received an unmodified or clean audit opinion and that can be found on page 143. So it's the highest level of assurance that we can provide. This year's opinion does include an emphasis of a matter paragraph. That's related to new accounting principles that were implemented. Governmental Accounting Standards Board Pronouncement Number 87, which is called simple title leases, that requires the recording of non-cancelable long-term leases as either an asset, whether it be a lease receivable or a lease payable. It requires the accounting for those as a balance sheet item of asset or a liability. And so the implementation did require the restatement of balances in the city's financial statement, but the restatement nets to zero oddly enough because that beginning balance at July 1/21 is the first year of implementation. And so the accounting standards say these beginning balances, the asset and a deferred inflow equal each other. And then from then on, they will not equal each other as they're amortized at different levels. The city also implemented Governmental Accounting Standards Board Pronouncement Number 97. And it's got a long title that I won't go into, but that's related to revise the disclosure of the deferred compensation plan because the city makes employer contributions to the employee deferred compensation accounts. And so there's required additional disclosure that came into play this year that's included in. You can see that in note seven. And I skipped over, the leases footnote is included in note four to the financial statements. So also included in the report is Management's Discussion and Analysis. That can be found on page 146, immediately follows our audit opinion. It's a good summary. Now, the city finance staff prepares the whole report except for our audit opinions. But that report is also prepared by, you know, that Management's Discussion Analysis is also prepared by finance staff. And it's a good place to go to see the summary of the activities that happened for the fiscal year. It compares fiscal '22 to '21 balances and levels and activities and explains the why, why things changed, what happened during the fiscal year. So it's a good concise summary for you to head to first, right after you read our opinion. You know, the most important piece of paper in the document, right? And so, so major events this year, Sonia mentioned quite a few, a few other events that we think is major. Again, the ARPA funding, you received the $6 million during the year that's earmarked. There were no expenditures. You'll see that that's recorded as unearned revenue at the end of the year because in the event, not that any of our clients plan to not spend the funding, but in the event you didn't spend it all at the end, it needs to be returned to the federal government. And so that's why it's recorded as unearned revenue until you spend it. So you'll recognize the revenue as the expenditures for the planned project occur. City also issued $14.5 million of refunding bonds, which included a debt service savings of $2.6 million over the life of what would have been the old bonds. And then pension liabilities this year. Pension liabilities declined significantly. Your pension liability, net pension liability declined $30 million. But don't get excited because unfortunately, that's because of the measurement date of June 30/21, which was based on the results of CalPERS investment gains. And all of those investment losses that are expected at June 30/22 are going to, as I say, swing the pendulum back. Whoop, and my papers. Swing the pendulum back to the other side. So the liability is expected to increase again at June 30/23. So we'll just have to hold tight till we can see what those numbers end up being. So as part of our audit, we also test internal controls of the city to verify that day-to-day practices are in line with city policies and transactions are recorded in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that means on a sample basis, we test transactions to supporting documentation including for areas including revenue, disbursements, payroll, capital assets and long-term debt. And we also test the year-end balances on the balance sheets and statements of debt position. So from that work, if there are any matters to report, they're included in our memorandum on internal control. That can be found on page 306 of your agenda packet. If we had matters to report, they could be in one of three categories, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies and other matters. We have no matters to report this year. And as I like to say, not for lack of trying. We were happy to report. That's actually very unusual that we have not, we have no comments in our memorandum on internal control. The only things that you'll see in that report are upcoming Governmental Accounting Standards Board pronouncements. That's that information only for you to know what's coming in the future. More accounting changes that are going to be reflected in the, potentially reflected in the financial statements in the future. Then the next document in the packet is the Required Communications because we're required to communicate certain matters to you. And that can be found on page 322 of the agenda. And the most significant communications include changes in accounting policies. Again, there was the change for Gasby 87 leases. That's considered a change in accounting policy, even though it's not something that the city can control in that implementation. And then also there was a change in the accrual method for sales taxes to align with the state remittance process. So that's considered a change in accounting policy and that's reflected in our required communications and also included in the financial statements as well. communications and also included in the financial statements as well. And then a couple other minor Gazby pronouncements, and four other Gazbys that were affected for the fiscal year that didn't affect the financial statements, but we still have to tell you about them. We noted no unusual transactions this year. And then one other area is significant accounting estimates, because the financial statements are that frozen point in time as of June 30. So all of the revenues and expenses for the year up to that point, and then the frozen balance sheet at that moment. So there are certain balances that include, you know, there are estimates at that point. Like examples include the fair value of investments. That's the fair value at that moment. If you were to sell everything on June 30, which is highly unlikely, but that's, you know, that's an accounting requirement to report them at the fair value. Other significant estimates include the net pension liability. It's that guess at that moment of what the potential liability is going to be, but the actual results can vary in the future. And then there are others as well, but those are the two main, most significant estimates. And I keep saying pension, but also there's the OPEB, net OPEB liability as well. And we had no disagreements with management. We had no material audit adjustments, which is also somewhat unusual. We actually had one, we only had one audit adjustment. That is the most unusual item to report, and it was very minor. And then we had no, in our uncorrected misstatements, which are any little differences we find along the way, we're required to accumulate them and make sure they don't become material or significant, and they're deemed trivial. We had very minor, minor little differences. And with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Amy and Sonia. Are there any clarifying questions of staff, council member?
Hi, sorry. Thank you so much for your report. Carrie and Sonia, no, I really enjoy the financial statements every year, but when it comes to the timing of the 1.2 million for developer fees, we took those before we were forecasting them, and then we took them and put them in the stabilization fund, half of it. Well, we had 1.2, and then we were 1.2 over, so it's kind of the same amount. It just happens to be, right?
The development impact fees will go into their associated funds, whether it's water, community facilities, et cetera. Well, those are the development impact fees. The development-related revenue relates to building permitting fees, the general fund fees that you're referencing that helped result in a general fund surplus. And according to policy, we take our surplus after we set aside everything needed for reserves, and policy, we take 50% of that to help pay down future pension liabilities. So it's about $600,000 that we pay down. Again, we're in the process of our mid-year update, where we will be able to provide you with a much better idea of the next two-year estimate, which will be next month. And we typically will take the two-year estimate, Carrie, correct, the two-year, for the two-year plan for what we think may be drawdown or surplus from budget stabilization at that point. We'll have a better idea for you at that point.
Okay. The only reason I had a concern was because I know that we are scared of how we're going to start coming in on budget, given the economy. And if we front-loaded the 1.2 this year, are we going to see any deficits that we might have been forecasting for, not the impact fees, but the total 1.2 minus the impact fees? Is there anywhere we think we might see a deficit that we're going to be like, ugh, we're going to be short, we're not going to be able to carry out that program or that project, that we were planning on it, like when we look at our five-year plan? I mean, we can wait until our next update, but that's something, that's the first thing I thought about since we front-loaded what happens to our future forecast.
Yeah, I'll address that. It will roll into our January update. It's not going to be something that's going to impact over the long term, because it's just a matter of shifting the money from one time period to another. Now, we did send the $600,000 off into PERS, which we wouldn't have done had it come in the current year. But also, the way I look at that one is, you know, we get that $600,000 back plus more over time, so when we look at the long-term projection, it pays for itself. There's a little bit of a timing thing, but we will reconcile that whole piece together. But you're right, it does lead to, at this point, you know, we're probably close to break even this year. We do need to look at the numbers, so I don't want to get too detailed on that. But that is going to be, one of the themes in our update is the 1.2 is not going to be there this year that we originally thought, because we already got it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further clarifying questions? Okay, at this time, then, we will open public comments on this item. Margaret?
We'll take public comments in the council chambers, followed by Zoom public comments. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk on the form provided on the counter at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. During this item to speak under public comments, remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I have no speaker cards on this item, and I have no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close public comments, move into council discussion.
I would just like to thank staff, staff all around, because the budget comes from so many different departments, and it takes a lot of work from each and every department in order to produce this budget. And I believe, I believe we've got some of the best staff across the county and further. You know, it's incredible what we're able to accomplish here in Brentwood compared to other cities, and we always, we always seem to make it financially through the tough times, and it's because everybody works together to plan these out and move things forward. So, thank you.
Yeah, I also want to say thank you. I know what goes into it. For all of you that are sitting here who have never looked at our financial reports, before I got here, like, well, why don't we do this, and why don't we do that? And it's interesting to look at them and what we have to spend money on just to keep our streets, our lights, our parks, and our finance team does an amazing job. Even this conversation about the pensions, we prepay as much as we can, and I will tell you that I have been stopped by other council people at other cities who say, how do you guys do it? Because other cities are suffering financially, and we've heard about cities that have even gone bankrupt, but the pension obligation is going to hit the fan in a lot of other cities, and we are very blessed beyond with our finance team, so I can't say thank you enough, and I enjoy these meetings, I think, more than any, our financial presentations more than any other meetings during the year. So, thank you.
And I would just echo the same thing, but also say, I have also spoken with city council members from other cities who don't have reserves, which is a very scary thing, especially now in anticipation of lean years ahead. And thank you to everyone involved in the audit report and helping it to be understandable to the general public and everyone. This is not at my high point like it is Jovita's, but I definitely read it and appreciate all the effort that went into it, and thank you for the presentation.
I also would like to thank staff. I mean, it's always a pretty extensive report, and a lot of work goes into that. So once again, just like all the other council members, I'd like to thank you guys for a wonderful report, and thank you for everything you guys do. Thank you. Last but not least, I guess, thank you all. Every time that we get to look at this report, it is presented in a very concise way, that it's very easy to understand and easy to question, which I appreciate. And I know that council members, Rary and Mendoza, also love to question, and so that's our job, and you make it easy, so thank you. At this time, we'll, I guess I need a motion for item C1.
I don't have my red agendas anymore. I don't know what I want to do, Margaret. I make a motion to accept our financial report.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. We'll move on to item C2, a resolution reciting the facts of the general municipal election held on November 8, 2022, declaring the results and taking such other actions regarding the election as provided by law. And city manager Tim Ogden will present on this. Tim?
Good evening, mayor and council. As you're aware, a general municipal election was held in the city of Brentwood on November 8, and as shown in the resolution attached to the staff report, Pat Anisha Davis Pearson was elected to council member for District 2. Tony Orlemans was elected as council member for District 4. These two council members will represent their constituents in their respective districts for four-year terms. In addition, Measure Q was adopted with a majority of the votes in favor. This evening, staff is requesting that council adopt a resolution reciting the facts of the general municipal election, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Questions of staff?
Mine is more of a clarification for the public. On page 374, under the discussion about Measure Q, it says provisions shall become effective 10 days after council declares the vote, and I just wanted some confirmation for the general public that the impact of this does not start January 1, but 10 days after tonight if this resolution passes.
Correct. It'll be December 23.
Thank you.
Any further questions of staff? Seeing none, then, we will open public comments. Margaret?
We will take public comment in the council chambers, followed by Zoom public comments. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk on the form provided on the counter at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Use the raise your hand feature in Zoom during this item to speak under public comments. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired, and I have no speaker cards on this item, and I do have one hand raised in Zoom. And we'll call on Danny Dorman.
Margaret, I, for Brentwood's citizens, both come in and call remote. I congratulate our two new members, and I hope that next year, they really delve into what it is that they were talking about when they were running. We have, for those who don't know, yes, we have one retired police officer, but we also have a pro temp judge. And so that's a lot of firepower to delve deeper into the machinations of the day-to-day. And so with mayor and councilwoman Myers and Mendoza, this should be a very strong, very Brentwood-forward group, and I look forward to talking and renting more about it next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comments and move into council discussion on this item. And if there is, yes, council member.
I would just like to congratulate our newest council members. I know you'll be sworn in a little bit, but I will be off the dais at that time, so you guys ran a great race, and you guys are in for a whirlwind of, you didn't know what you got into. But, you know, if you ever want to talk, feel free to reach out to me, and I would be happy to talk with you and help you work through things, and congratulations.
I also want to say congratulations. Welcome to the fun. It's a lot of fun. I've enjoyed it, so I hope you enjoy it as much as I do. Is this where I can say some nice things about Karen also? Yeah? The next one? Okay, well, we'll see you up here in a few minutes.
Yeah, I also, I'll be honest with you, it's great. It's great to see the two people here tonight that won the elections. I think that you guys won, ran a great race, but at the same time, it was done with a lot of class from both of you and a lot of integrity, and that's something that's real important for the city right now. And so I just want to really say congratulations for the both of you, and I look forward to hopefully, obviously, you guys know that I'm very involved in the community, to see you guys up here and hopefully to work with you guys, but at the same time, really, really excited. If I was going to step down, and these are the two people I would like to see up here, this is a great way to go out. So, once again, congratulations. Like I said, you ran your stuff with a lot of class and integrity, and once again, that's what the city's looking for. So, congratulations again. Thank you.
And I would like to add my congratulations as well. I look forward to working with both of you, and don't be afraid to admit what you don't know. I came into this thinking I had a little more knowledge than I actually ended up having, and I think it's okay to be that way, as long as you're, you know, open to learning and open to reaching out when you have questions, and reach out to staff, or if you haven't spoken to another council member, you can reach out to one of us, but watch that very carefully. But good luck to you. I look forward to working with you.
Congratulations. I'll get an opportunity to say more in just a bit. With that, do we have a motion on item C2?
I will make a motion, as detailed in the staff report, to certify the election results.
And I will second that.
First and a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
It is unanimous. At this time, we will move into item D1, presentations and recognition of councilmember Rary and Vice Mayor Rodriguez for their service on the Brentwood City Council. So we're going to now move around front, and I'm going to, just so we'll understand the physical process of things here, I'm going to have each one of the council members, the council member and the vice mayor, to come up, receive their presentation individually, and I would be happy to have, at that point, an opportunity for the family to come up and have a photograph taken with them, if you would like. You don't feel like you have to have that done, but if you want to, and just take a moment to do that, and that way, we can more efficiently get through this next part of it, and everyone gets the recognition they deserve and gets to spend time with their friends and loved ones. So I'm going to ask the vice mayor if he'll join with me up here in front, and I'll... This is a moment of great mixed emotions. It has been such a pleasure and privilege to work with you for the four years on city council. You definitely, wow, you definitely love the community, and I know this has been your home your whole life, and you have served our community in many different capacities, even being Citizen of the Year at one point. And as vice mayor and as a councilperson, you represented our community with all of your heart. And so I want to let you know how much I appreciate everything that you have done. And before I present you the plaque from the city of Brentwood, you know what? Let me present that we also have others to present some things from you. Representative from Senator Glazer's office, Clara Laura, is with us, as well as Supervisor Diane Burgis has a video that we're going to watch. So I'm going to, at this time, present this plaque, which says, "Presented with appreciation to Johnny Rodriguez for four years of dedicated service to the citizens of Brentwood while serving on the city of Brentwood City Council from 2018 to 2022, presented this 13th day of December 2022." So at this time, if we could see the presentation from Supervisor Burgis' video.
Good evening, everyone. This is Supervisor Diane Burgis. I am sorry I can't be there in person, but I did want to send a message via video to our two departing council members and our two incoming council members, Johnny and Karen. I just want to thank you for all the contributions you've done for our community, not only in elected office, but also in your own personal time. Both of you have a record of contributing so much in different ways, but making Brentwood the place that it is. And so thank you so much, and also a big thank you to your families for loaning you to us. And then I wanted to welcome the two new council members, Pat Anisha Davis Pearson and Tony Orlemans. and Tony Orleman. It is such a privilege to serve in elected office. It is not as easy as it looks, but it is so rewarding. And I am so confident that you have things that you're going to find that you can personally contribute to your community. And I'm looking forward to seeing what that is. Please reach out to my office if we can be of any help. And I just want to say thank you to all that serve. Have a good evening.
At this time, we're going to ask Representative Claire Alora from Senator Glazer's office to come with her presentation. And for those of you that don't know, Representative Alora was at one point a councilperson as well in the city of Oakley.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to hold that? So yes, I was a former councilmember. And during that time, when I was on council in Oakley, I was able to work with Mr. Johnny Rodriguez as he came on to council here in Brentwood. We also have friends in similar circles and I know that he's a good person. I know he comes from a great family. His beautiful wife also happened to be teacher for my son at preschool. So I do know that they've contributed so much to the community throughout the year. This is from Senator Steve Glazer, on behalf of Senate District 7. I want to congratulate you for your four years of service. There's a whole lot of accomplishments that you've done prior to coming on the council and I know that you will continue to doing good work on the council. I do want to read some highlights from it because I think it's well deserved. Throughout his tenure on the Brentwood City Council, Johnny Rodriguez worked diligently to address the concerns and the needs of residents of the area and improve the quality of life for future generations. And in doing so, he earned a reputation as an individual deeply committed to a variety of programs and has had a remarkable impact on the area youth, who have enjoyed the opportunity to thrive as a result of his more than 20 years of experience working with youth, young adults, school administrations, and the community on efforts focusing on youth empowerment, conflict mediation, and violence intervention. And whereas, as a result of his tireless hard work and unwavering commitment, Johnny Rodriguez has compiled an impressive record of personal and civic achievements, a record that has earned the admiration and respect of those persons who have had the privilege of associating with him over the years. So therefore be it resolved by Senator Stephen M. Glazer that he is, he takes personal pleasure in commending the Honorable John Rodriguez upon the completion of his service as a member of the Brentwood City Council, applauds him for his admirable record of responsible citizenship and dedicated service, and for enhancing the lives of the people of Brentwood, and conveys his warm best wishes for future achievement and great personal satisfaction in the future. Congratulations.
Thank you. Also Supervisor Burgess has a presentation for you as well. Certificate of Appreciation. At this time, I will turn the microphone to you.
Oh, man. Okay. God, I got a lot of people I want to thank. This whole journey has never been part of, for Johnny Rodriguez, right? It's been here to represent a community. I know it's been said many times, born and raised in Brentwood. I've always thought it was weird when people would say that I didn't have the right passion or heart for the city of Brentwood. My roots are in Brentwood. My passion's in Brentwood. I'm not leaving Brentwood. My family's not leaving Brentwood. So I'm saying that, I had to say that because it always, that's probably one of the biggest things that sometimes did bother me to hear. But in that, I just want to thank council members, Mayor. I know we've been here for the last four years. You've been patient with me, two years as the mayor, but also as a councilmember. I appreciate you for welcoming me and bringing me in and feeling comfortable. I think one of the hardest things for a person like myself in growing in certain portions of Brentwood and being sons of farmworkers is making sure we're comfortable here. I think for a long time, we didn't even feel comfortable to walk in the city hall and to be able to sit in a position like this. It made me comfortable, but it made a lot of other people in Brentwood comfortable to walk in a building like this. So I want to thank you, Mayor, but also as a councilmember, all that you did to make that happen. I also want to thank, there's others that are here. I also was on the Brentwood School Board. That was my first journey when it came to politics. And I know there's some wonderful people here tonight, some councilmembers, but also superintendent, that I really want to thank that helped me understand this journey, but also be supportive and be those mentors that, at times that I needed. So I want to thank the Brentwood School Board for that support and let me see, I mean, helping me through this process. I'm sorry, I got so much I would love to say and I want to be able to be respectful and classy, right? I think that's important. I want to thank the city staff. I want to thank Mr. Ogden. I also want to thank the former city manager, all the staff. Everybody here's been patient with me. I know some of these areas are not my strengths and you've all been able to take the time and walk me through some of this stuff, but also when I've called or emailed or anything, you guys have always taken the time for me, so I do appreciate that and I hope that we could continue to work in the future together. So I want to thank them. I also want to thank the community. I'll be honest with you, the community spoke, right? The community spoke twice. It spoke when I ran in regards to putting me in this position, but it spoke at the last election as well, when it came to District 2. So I just want to say that the community has spoken and I hope we listen to the community because I think we won. For me leaving, I think we've brought somebody in that's more than qualified to do that. So the community has spoken and honestly, I love this community very much. Friends, it's a lot of you here. The beauty of Johnny Rodriguez is that I love is that I know a combination of everything, right? I look in the crowd and I know a little story about everybody and everybody's from Brentwood and just that, just that, man, it's a good feeling, to be honest with you, to know people from all levels of life. My family, my mom was here. I want to thank my mom. I'll be honest with you, one of the saddest things I heard is my father didn't want to come. I'll be honest with you, it really bothered me. My father didn't want to come because he didn't want to see his son be disrespected. He wouldn't be able to see here, sit here and see his son be disrespected and have to swallow that and not be able to really express himself. And it makes me feel bad that my father felt that uncomfortable to come here because honestly, my father's a, when you talk about farmworking communities, my father worked 58 years in the fields. He had a, we call it a palada, which is a shovel, all his life. His biggest success was to be able to own a house in Village Drive in Brentwood when he bought it for like $24,000. And for my father not to come here because he felt like they were going to disrespect his son and he couldn't sit there and let that happen is very sad. So I'm looking forward to the change because honestly, it really did bother me because I really wanted my father here. To my beautiful wife, I'll be honest with you, without here, without her, I wouldn't have probably been able to control myself or conduct myself. I'll be honest with you, my wife has always been my rock. She's been the support. I can't lie, in all those meetings in Zoom, my wife was about three feet over there to keep me humble and keep me, keep me grounded when the times were hard. But you know what? Those hard times were only good lessons, right? They were only good lessons and I've learned a lot. One of the biggest reasons why I did not run for city council is because I'm the father of two boys. And when I ran for city council and people talk about agendas, I never had one. You could look at any panel, my biggest thing was for young people of Brentwood, right? And bring recognition and a voice to a community that never had one. One of the biggest things, the only reasons why, because I always said, to be a good leader, you need to be a good father. And to me, that's more important than anything here, all this titles and everything else, is to be a good father. I'm really saddened that my oldest son is not here. My son is not here and honestly, he means a lot to me, but I'm blessed to have my other son, Josiah's, because it's time to be a father a little bit more. We don't talk, you know, becoming a leader is not getting on the council. Being a leader is what you did before getting on the council. And that's what's important. So the work that has been done has been done for years and my sons have been part of that journey. So I want to thank everybody. There's a lot of wonderful people here. If I was to go down names and people, would be here all night. But I just want to say something. One of the most important things for me to do was, there was a video you see on Facebook, it comes, like, it shows your past things and it showed me being put onto the council. I came on here with a lot of integrity and a lot of, in Spanish they call palabra, right? With a word. We're not perfect, we make mistakes. I understand that. But I also want to leave here that way too. So on that note, I just want to thank everybody. Thank everybody that I've been able to work with. Thank my, thank the whole community, not just one portion of the community. And I just want to thank everybody. Once again, I'm so happy, I'll be honest with you, that these two individuals will be sitting at the council. I was able to sleep after that for really well. So once again, thank you very much.
At this time, Vice Mayor, stay here for just a minute. Those that would have interest in having a picture at this time with Vice Mayor Rodriguez, just feel free to come up here. At this time, if councilperson Karen Rary would make her way, she has, as usual, warded through obstacles to be here tonight and she's still smiling. And if you had an idea of the things her day went through today, it is an amazing thing to see her still smiling because she's a warrior for sure. I always looked up to you as a person, but tonight, in those shoes, I have to look up at you. Councilmember Rary has been on the city council since 2016. She has, long before she was on council, been an activist and a voice in the community for positive change in areas in the community that a lot of people were not aware of and families and people that they weren't aware of. And since she's been on council, the list of things that you have accomplished as a councilperson is so long that I, when I began to have the brilliant idea, I'm going to make a list, I couldn't get it all on two pages. And so I said, you know what, I'll just talk about that a little bit, but she has been, Councilmember Rary has been a loyal representative to our community in many, many ways. And she's been on not only committees and subcommittees and ad hoc committees and city council, but in addition to that, she's been in some representative areas at the state level with the League of Cities, in county levels, in representative in other areas, the John Marsh House, and I can't remember now the name of that.
John Marsh Historic Trust.
Historic Trust, thank you. Even on medication, she's got a mind like a steel trap. But one of the things that has just been really great to work with you, there's, I've never met anyone that loved the details that are hiding behind commas and extra two spaces and, and there's nothing that passes your observation. And you were very much someone that taught me the importance even more than when I first got on council of the minute detail. And I greatly appreciate your heart for, for the detail. You are quite an individual. And having said that, I would like to present with appreciation to councilperson Karen Rary for six years of dedicated service to the citizens of Brentwood while serving on the City Brentwood, City of Brentwood City Council from 2016 until 2022, presented this 13th day of December 2022. From the city, from the council, thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to ask Representative Claire Alora from Senator Glazer's office to bring her presentation for councilperson Rary.
Hello, Karen. I also had the joy of working with Karen when I first came on the council. We came up together at the same time. And like Mayor said, you were involved in so much and one of the first conversations we had, I think you had asked me, so what have you done so far? And I was like, well, I've come on to city council. And I did a few other things here and there, but your resume before you came on to council was so impressive to me and inspiring. So I knew I needed to step it up and I needed to do more, you know, for my community. I needed to encourage other people to do more. So I want to thank you for being that inspiration to not only know that being part of city council is one thing, but being part of the community in any other way is, is everything else. So I thank you for, for that and for doing that for Brentwood. Like the mayor said, you have been involved in so many things. These are some of the highlights. There was a lot of research and a lot of organizations and committees and whatnot that are on here. It would take all night to read. So I'll just read a highlight. A leader in every sense of the word, Karen Rary has also shared her talents and expertise on the school interagency committee, as director and city liaison for the John Marsh House Trust, as chair and member of the Contra Costa Transportation Authority Citizen Advisory Committee, and as founding commissioner and chair of the City of Brentwood Park and Rec Commission, to name only a small portion of her magnificent public endeavors. So as resolved by Senator Stephen M. Glazer, that he takes personal pleasure in commending the Honorable Karen Rary upon the completion of her service as member of the Brentwood City Council, applauds her for her admirable record of responsible citizenship and dedicated service and for enhancing the lives of the people of Brentwood and conveys his warm best wishes for future achievement and great personal satisfaction in the future. Congratulations.
Also from Supervisor Burgess, recognition for your outstanding, and I'll, and I'll read it. Supervisor Burgess hereby recognizes Brentwood City Councilmember Karen Rary on her 10 years of dedicated service to the city of Brentwood. Her leadership, integrity, continued vision, and distinguished service on behalf of the residents of Brentwood made this community a better place to live. Presented this 13th day of December 2022, Supervisor Diane Burgess, Contra Costa County, District 3.
I, I'm going to keep it short and sweet. You know, Vice Mayor is absolutely correct. Doing this job is about working for the community and it really is a job I thoroughly enjoy doing. People say, but you get all these complaints. But I love to solve the problems. And when you put your heart into it, they know that you're there to help them. And, and that's what it's all about is we work for the people and we're supposed to do the people's job the way they want us to do it. And that's what I've tried to do. It, it's bittersweet leaving. I don't know, you know, somebody had mentioned earlier about me leaving the area and, and it's true, we're retiring closer to our grandkids in, in Tennessee. We've got two kids in Tennessee, a mother-in-law in Tennessee and a son and his family in Tennessee. and a son and his family in Texas. So we're looking at somewhere halfway between there. That's if the house sells. Maybe I will be here for 2024 at this rate. Anyway, it is, it's a job of passion. You put a lot of hours into it, but it's worth it. And the one thing I can share with the two councilmembers coming on is just listen to what people have to say and talk to staff on how you can resolve these issues. And you'll love your job. You'll absolutely love your job. I don't have much more to say. I think that we need to get these two sworn in. So I'm going to step away at this time. And thank you. Thank you for letting me serve you. I truly enjoyed the years that I've had with the city. Thank you. So these two, I didn't really know either one of them when they ran for council. And we have become very good friends. And so I want a picture with them so that when I leave, I have something with them. So I'm going to hand the microphone over.
Mayor has to log back in, by the way.
At this time, we will open public comments. And I'll turn it to you, Margaret.
I have 20 speaker cards for public comment on this item. We'll take public comments in the council chambers, followed by Zoom public comment. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk on the form provided at the counter at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom during this item to speak under public comments. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I'm going to start with Laura Avila, followed by Ike Montanaz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Welcome back. It's good to be back in this chamber. There are several things that I'd like to say. The very first is, thank you, Johnny. Thank you. I run out of words. We've spoken. And thank you, Karen, for your contributions and your service to the city of Brentwood. Congratulations to the two new City Council members and the naming of a new Vice Mayor. And happy birthday to my dear friend, Susanna Meyer. There is one person whom I especially wish to acknowledge. Karen, you will be missed not only by me, my husband Phil, but by the multitude of people whose lives you've touched and enriched through your hard work, diligence, and unwavering passion. You've worked tirelessly and unselfishly for over the past 26 years for the citizens of Brentwood, culminating in bringing wisdom, valued insight, devotion, and integrity to your position on the City Council. As your term comes to an end, know that you leave behind a legacy that will forever live on, and it is second to none. We, the citizens of Brentwood and your friends, owe you a debt of gratitude, one which we could never repay. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ike Montanaz, followed by Rod.
Thank you. I'm Mike Montanaz. I've been a resident of Brentwood for 51 years. And Johnny, I just want to thank you for your service on this council. Maybe you didn't accomplish all the goals that you had set for yourself at the beginning, but now we can look to the future, Johnny. The best is yet to come for you. There are hundreds of young people out on East County in the communities waiting for your leadership to help transform their lives. Your success with One Day at a Time is a testimony to that fact. There are young children waiting for you to organize that next community egg hunt, which includes hundreds of happy, eager children and their families. I hope the city will be more supportive of that event. The cultural events that you organized, like El Dia de los Muertos, have been well received and shows the cultural diversity that exists in Brentwood. Such celebrations bring people together, and you're known for bringing people together. Johnny, you have a special gift to organize such events. And I know that you do it because you love Brentwood. It's your hometown, and you truly love to give back to your community. There are nonprofit organizations that could use your help in organizing fundraising events to raise much-needed funds in order to better serve their clients. I have heard rumors that Brentwood might consider the return of the Corn Fest. How well I remember you and your teams of young people helping to put up security fences, manning the soft drink booths, and distributing ice where it was needed. The young people were students that you had counseled and encouraged to stay in school, to participate in sports, to stay clear of addictive behaviors, and to perform community service like they were doing that day. It was such a joy to see all of that happen. So Johnny, the community is waiting for you with open arms to get involved and to help them. I'm done now, but I'd like to start like I ended. Johnny, the best is yet to come for you, amigo.
The next speaker is Rod, followed by Yolanda Alvarez.
Thank you. I'm just going to read. "The first time we met Karen Rary was over coffee. I'd mentioned the upcoming election in a Facebook post, and then candidate, and then candidate Karen invited my wife and I to come to Pete's for a cup of coffee and a chat. She won our votes that day. We knew she was someone different in politics. She cared what we had to say, and she knew so many things that made it worthwhile to listen to what she had to say, but we could never have imagined the enormous impact Karen would have on this City Council. Karen brought a level of integrity, compassion, and diligence that had not been seen in the previous City Council. There are too many accomplishments to list tonight. One stellar example is the goodwill decision. While others on the council were content to ignore the community and blindly pass an approval, Karen Rary went out and did the hard work to really understand the issue. She came into chambers ready to fight for the community. And in the end, the knowledge she gained from her research made it clear to everyone why that project should not move forward. I was fortunate to be in the room that night, this room, and it was incredible to see." There are so many more examples. Her principled opposition to gerrymandering districts, her support for John Pique's appointment, CFDs to help solve the ECCFPD funding issue, her open door to NoRezone, her Saturday morning coffee with Karen meetings, her support for local businesses through the COVID closures, her support for the Sienna Sound Wall, her recent push for campaign finance limits to free us from the special interests, so many more. There's not enough time here to mention everything, but we could see it in the online community where there were so many people who posted, "Thank you, Karen Rary," for so many reasons. Through it all, Karen always let us know she was one of us. Not just one of us, the best of us, the inspiration for all of us and the reason we had the faith to keep coming down here, knowing we would be heard. She's inspired us, she's taught us, and she's moved us. Tonight, Karen is leaving this office, but she is not leaving us. We will never lose the lessons she taught us, the inspiration to serve the public with respect and dignity, and the belief that the truth will win out in the end. And for that, for one more time, I came down here to say thank you, Karen Rary."
Following Yolanda, Olga Bedriales.
Good evening, councilmembers. My brother basically said a lot of things I was going to say, but I contemplated what to say tonight due to unfair comments made regarding Johnny. My first instinct as a sister is protect. But Johnny and our siblings and our parents grew up in Brentwood and attended the schools in the district. We have seen it grow from the beginning. Our father, a farm worker for many, many years, and our mother has always worked in the community in helping people. Johnny has done the same and given back unselfishly, even through negative comments directed to him and his family. Johnny, through it all, has always maintained himself professional. Johnny, what I see right now of my brother, I see him up there, but what I see is him trying to get him out of bed to get to school in shorts in the rain, catching crawdads. And I see Mr. Montanaz here. He was our elementary principal. And so, Johnny, that being said, I want you to know that we respect all you've done for the community, especially for the youth and the less fortunate. We grew up with challenges and not having a lot, but we have always had desire to help others. You have been a blessing to many families and the people that truly know you and your hard work you have done. All they do is praise you. May God continue to bless you and your new endeavors. I love you.
Following Olga is Ana Connie Rodriguez.
Good evening. Councilmember Johnny Rodriguez, thank you for your service to our beautiful city. Your scope of work, your contribution in Brentwood is priceless, Johnny. Your efforts to unite the old and the new Brentwood is vital to our city. And your efforts have been, again, relentless. Thank you so much. It's so important to Brentwood. You have maintained composure, professionalism in light of all the attacks against you, Johnny, against your character, against your familia. And for that, I thank and applaud you. You're muy hombre. It's just unimaginable. I feel the need to personally apologize to you, to your mamá. Lo siento mucho por lo que han hecho. I'm so sorry for what they've done to your son. And I apologize to you as well, Ana Connie. The behavior on behalf of the City Council needs to stop now. I don't want to attend a meeting where councilmembers are bickering and attacking one another. That's not why you're here. This high school playground behavior needs to stop now. Please, I implore you all. Let's focus on making better in Brentwood a reality. Let's focus on appreciating and respecting the position of all our city officials, our city manager, our assistant city manager, our directors of park, all these wonderful people here. Let's respect their position, please. It is with great excitement that I welcome our two newly-elected City Council people, Pat Anisha and Tony. Thank you. I feel that we're introducing again some class, character, and in the situation, Pat Anisha, a little bit of Christ-like behavior, which is much needed and lacking in the past City Council. Going forward, here is my dream, is that we return to civility, that we return to adultism, and we focus on the matters that concern our wonderful city. Brentwood is a jewel of Contra Costa. I say that not as Rotarian, not as a member of the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce, but as just an individual, as a citizen of Brentwood. I pray that going forward, our new City Council behaves in a manner that supports the beauty, elegance, and class of Brentwood. Mayor Joel Bryan, I also ask that you continue to keep these meetings in person, not just on Zoom. Zoom can feed into a lot of unprofessionalism and this mean-girl syndrome that we've been realizing this past year. So I applaud you all that this meeting is in person. And I'll just leave by saying, Johnny, your scope of work is past over decades, and we're never going to forget that. And we truly appreciate you and everything you've done. And I know it's not over for you. And I stand behind you in whatever you choose to do going forward, because everything that you do is for the betterment of Brentwood. That term that we use better in Brentwood is because of you. Thank you. Thank you all.
Following Ana Connie, the next speaker following Ana Connie will be Gerald Johnson and Denise Duran.
Good evening. My name is Ana Connie Rodriguez, the wife of Vice Mayor Johnny Rodriguez. First, congratulations to the new councilmembers. I hope current councilmembers will work together in a positive way for our community. Tonight, I'm going to be speaking as a wife and for all the other family members that had to deal with all the bullying tactics that took place the last few years. Sadly, our councilmembers, or those who ran, don't run alone. They run with family and friends supporting them. So every post, every word spoken to them were aimed at us as well. Where did the days go when we could agree to disagree but continue to work together for the better of our community? Obviously, we knew that being on the council would make us an open book when we ran. Yet the comments and hate thrown at my husband were tactics for other councilmembers' personal agendas and not for the betterment of our whole community. My husband has never been a follower. It wasn't going to start at the council. He's been a true leader, doing the community work for the last 30 years, four of those on the school board and four on the council. Being in the council did not identify my husband, being a son, friend, husband, and most importantly, being an amazing father. My husband's term may be done on the council, but he's not going anywhere. He will continue to give back to this community that he's already dedicated so much to. He has deep roots in this community and will not be chased away by a few people who thought they would discredit him. Thank you to everyone who has supported my husband along the way. We know who you are. To my husband, I am proud of you. Thank you for continuing to be an amazing husband and father along the way and everything you have done for this community. I will always stand by your side. I love you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Gerald Johnson. I'm the immediate past president of the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce. One of the words I heard spoken here today several times was "community." And what a community is, is a group of people who have the same goal, to uplift everybody. The Brentwood Chamber of Commerce's goal is to uplift every business in Brentwood, thereby uplifting the community. And over the years, we've worked with Councilmember Karen Rary and Councilmember Johnny Rodriguez. And so I just wanted to give my heartfelt feelings to the both of them. It's not the person who's the brightest in the room that wins the race. It's the person with the most heart, the person who cares the most, because that person puts everything above what they want or need to benefit the community. The person I'm talking about in that case is Johnny Rodriguez. He's helped us when we put on La Gran Fiesta. He's helped us in various parades and things. Not only that, he's involved in the community before he became a councilmember. So we all should be very proud of him. So we all should be very proud of the things that he's accomplished and how he's supported each and every organization in the community and how he's benefited people in this community. Karen Rary, I want to thank her for her thoughtfulness and her openness and her willingness to listen. So as a member, I've been the president for the last two years because I'm the immediate past president. And I've worked with both of them. And I want to thank them for working with the chamber, coming out and supporting us at our mixers sometimes and speaking with us and speaking with the local business owners and coming to our events. They are great people, and they've done a lot for the community. The Chamber of Commerce truly appreciates everything you've both done. Johnny, we love you, care for you. You're the man, baby. And myself and the incoming president, we got something for you. But I want to welcome Pat Anisha Davis and Tony. So thank you so much. Welcome to both of you. And now I'll turn it over to...
Denise.
Denise Duran.
It is truly an honor to be here this evening with all of you in this absolutely gorgeous room that is designed to create opportunity. It is designed to create communication. It is designed to create our future through today. And yeah, this is the work. This is the work. And sometimes the communication isn't always easy. There's, we can all tell that this is a very passionate group. And that passion is what propels us in our purpose. I want to thank Councilmember Johnny Rodriguez, Councilmember Karen Rary for your service, for your commitment, for your dedication. On behalf of the chamber, we have certificates for both of you, which I said I was told is okay to present to you. And we also have a little plant because what you have planted in our city, in our community, will continue to grow. As it was said, we are your legacy. And as a chamber, as the incoming president, I am dedicated and so excited to develop relationships and connections with the current and incoming council members so that we can continue to move towards our purpose. Now, of course, it's not really nearly enough, but there's also 100 grand in here as well. So, just saying. So with that, I say thank you again. Thank you to who is here today and for who will be here tomorrow.
The next speaker is Herman Ambrees, followed by Kathy Griffin.
Good evening, City Councilmembers and Mayor. Man, three minutes? That's all I got? I can't, cannot say enough thank yous in three minutes for Johnny Rodriguez. My father was working the fields as well, then moved to the Pittsburgh Steel Mill. My grandfather worked in the fields here as well and my great-grandfather as well. Three generations, four generations. Been here a long time. My name's Hermine Ambrees. I'm a local artist. And if you haven't heard of me, look me up. Google. But it's not about me. It's about Johnny. When a school system fails you and the local police officers not speaking about Brentwood here, this is my hometown, and they see a person like me dressed the way I am, and they judge you, point the finger, no doors open up. So with that being said, me as an artist, I'm a muralist, working on a mural out in Pittsburgh right now. Working on a mural out in Antioch. Doing school services for Antioch, doing school service for Pittsburgh, missing MIA in Brentwood. Again, it's not about me. But if you ever walked a day in his shoes, better put on your roller skates because this guy does work. School, at his job, at home with his family, and breaking, I don't even know how you have the time, bro, for all that. You know, so with that being said, thank you, thank you, thank you. I still got another minute to say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, from my family and from my heart, bro. Breaks my heart that we cannot unite. If we didn't unite this council here, we already failed. Because this is you, you know? This is me looking out into y'all here, you know? And I see that that system failure, that's not good. We should be able to talk about things and fix it. So I'm gonna finish this off with another thank you, Johnny. You guys could Google this. Einstein made a mistake on his nine, on his tables, multiple chart, right? He said, "Despite the fact that I analyzed nine problems correctly, no one congratulated me. But when I made one mistake, everyone started laughing." This means that even in a person is successful, society will notice his slightness mistake, and they'll like that. So.
The next speaker is Kathy Griffin, followed by Sandra Myers.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, council and the community tonight. I came up today to talk about Karen Rary and her service to the city of Brentwood. And I'm gonna get emotional because it's been... I thought it was actually longer than six years you were on the council, but it was six years because, you know, you were involved so much in the community with all your volunteer work, the Brentwood Community Chess, Park and Rec Commission, and all the other things that you do for our community. And I just wanted to say, you set such a great example for a City Councilperson. You started out with coffee talks. You know, you always met with the residents whenever we needed to get understandable information about some of the things that are so big and hard to understand. You made those things understandable to us. And you fought for us on the council. I just wrote down a few things. My water heater went out today, so I had a little bit more to think about than... But I did jot down some things I wanted to say about your many subcommittee assignments, your voluntary associations, your work with Waterfront Coalition, you know, bringing the waterfront cities, you know, together. And also your work on the Transportation Authority, making sure developments were appropriate for the spaces and the land use here in this city. You know, Rod mentioned the Goodwill Industries, where you exposed that as the wrong type of industry for that particular lot. I've talked to people in the Carnegie community, and they were so thankful that you stepped up and exposed that. We have Bridle Gate and all the inefficiencies that were in that development, demanding thorough vetting of developments, making sure affordable housing was included in developments instead of just paying the in lieu of fees. Sound walls, you know, along the bypass and also sound studies for the new gas station at the Fairview and Lone Tree. Just going the extra mile to always be prepared, always be here. Past precedent and benchmarking that you do. Bringing important items to future agenda items. Working through personal health challenges without missing a beat. Tonight, your root canal, you're here. I mean, my personal connection to you. When my disabled brother needed a new dryer and you said you could give him the dryer, and you just asked me to make a donation to the Brentwood Community Chess, which I gladly did. It's just the type of person that you are. We're gonna miss you dearly. You're a great lady. You are a great councilperson. You've set the bar very high. I just want you to know that. And I'm gonna miss you. And I might see you in Tennessee since my daughter and her family just moved there in January. So hopefully our paths will cross again many, many times. Thank you, Karen.
Following Sandy Myers, the next speaker is Nicole Xavier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I thank all of you because I know what a thankless job this is that you do. But I'm here tonight specifically to thank my good friend Karen Rary. When we moved out here in 2003, I had been on the Danville Parks and Rec. And Craig Bronson, Director of Parks, got ahold of me and said, "You need to go on our commission, our Parks and Rec commission, and you need to talk to Karen Rary," which I did. Excuse me. And I served on the commission out here for 15 years. And I don't think I could have done it without Karen's input, her insight, her history. Were you on the first Parks and Rec? Okay, I thought you were on the first one. The foundation that you had out here was fabulous. And I have to tell you that she was part of what formed that. And we followed it. And you have award-winning parks in Brentwood that you can all be so proud of and our community can be so proud of. And Karen, you had a huge hand in that. I don't even want to think about Brentwood without you in it. So I hope your house doesn't sell. I hope you stay. And thank you. Love you.
And following the speaker, the next speaker is Paul Ramirez.
Good evening, council. Two years ago, I asked that you appoint Karen Rary to the remaining two-year term of the vacant at-large council seat. I want to mention upfront that I do not know Councilmember Rary on a personal level. I know what she shares through social media, and I know what she has done on council. And over the last five years that I've been watching these meetings, I have not always agreed with her. However, I believe Councilmember Rary has been immensely valuable to our city. And her approach to items on the agenda is exactly what I want to see as a Brentwood resident. What I've seen from Councilmember Rary is a dedication to her role on council. She would take the time to research items beyond what was included in the agenda packet. And that's not an insult to anybody who writes the packet. Adding independent research is just what an analytical person does when they are about to make an important decision. She also made it a point to visit sites around the city and comparable sites in other cities to fully understand what impact a project will have on a neighborhood. She has always been responsive to questions and has never hesitated to tell me when she felt I was missing context. That context was at times buried deep within the detail of a seemingly unrelated project. I hope the existing and upcoming council members use this approach as a model when preparing to vote on a project. Thank you, Councilmember Rary, for your dedication to our city.
Following Paul Ramirez is Jose Cordón.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. My name is Paul Ramírez. I'm an Antioch resident, but I'm a Brentwood native. I was born in Brentwood 71 years ago on Minnesota Avenue. So I still claim Brentwood. I want to thank Johnny Rodriguez. Johnny Rodriguez walked into the position of city council with his head held high and with integrity. And his record in terms of his contribution to Brentwood goes way back. As the founder and executive director of One Day at a Time, and also in terms of the city councilman, and then also in terms of a school board member. So he gives and believes in his community of Brentwood. He's transformed families. He's helped parents with kids that are going through adolescence. We remember that, right? And he was able to help those parents and students to live together in peace, their sons and daughters, and also to go forward in a very, very positive manner. But I do want to talk about something to have, to have him say that his father's not here in one of his highest levels of honor because of disrespect. And that is something that I've experienced in terms of watching almost a year ago a Zoom meeting here in terms of the Brentwood City Council where he was attacked. And since it was a public record in terms of what happened, Councilwoman Mendoza, I was appalled by what I heard. Your family, in terms of your sister, I think it was your husband, jumped on him in terms of his integrity, attacked the integrity of ODAT. I took offense to that because I was on the board for 14 years. Audits were done every year. There was mud that was slung up against the wall, that there was question about the integrity of that program. It was never proven, but you threw that mud on the wall. You did that up until a month ago. And so what I'm saying to you is, remember what this member said. His father's not here because of disrespect. And as the two new members come in, I caution them because they need to work with you. But they also had to be careful with you because we've seen it. It's recorded. It's documented. Do your duty as a leader. Do your duty as a responsible, positive human being. Johnny Rodriguez walked in here with his head held high and his integrity, and he's gonna leave with his head held high and with his integrity. Thank you.
Following Jose is Cinziana Todor.
Hello, how y'all doing? It's good to be here. Johnny, I want to say thank you. And just speak to a little bit about his character. So I was one of those young people in One Day at a Time. And when I was a freshman, they wanted to take me out of the school because of some things that I had done. And it was because of Johnny Rodriguez that I was able to stay on that campus. To the point where if I was a better student, they wanted to make me valedictorian, right? Because I had that potential in me that he saw that they didn't. When I was going to juvenile court, right? It was him who would go and vouch on my behalf. And he had a bunch of things to do. He's the one that inspired me to be a community worker, a community activist, a community organizer. One thing that I've seen done all over the place is food giveaways. I think many of us have seen it right now, especially during Thanksgiving and things like that. But I've never seen what he did and what I'm very glad to be a part of. We marched through the streets and we brought the food directly to the people's doorstep. They didn't have to come to us. They didn't have to register. We shut down the whole street, food at their door. That's community work. This man right here has been security for a woman in Regaburta Menchu. Y'all know who that is? That's a Nobel Peace Prize winner whose family was exterminated in Guatemala. That was, he was her security, willing to put his life on the line for that woman. Imagine what he wouldn't do for the city of Brentwood, what he has done for the city of Brentwood. This man has integrity, has character, has heart for this city like no other. Inspiring man to myself and many others like myself. Part of that inspiring story, if you know Johnny Rodriguez, is that he grew up with dyslexia. Makes it very difficult to read, to understand, to register things that you read on text. Matter of fact, they say that reading is one of the most fundamental things to your development as a human, which is why when Hitler came to power, he burned those books, which is why slaves weren't allowed to read because there's power in the written word. He struggled with that. And yet, through that struggle, became the president of the school board of Brentwood. Come on. Come on. And now he's stepping down from vice mayor, from city council. It's gonna feel it. Y'all gonna feel it. Because you cannot replace that. You can't do it. Johnny, I want to thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. Thank you to your family, Ana Connie, all the boys, everybody here. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Johnny.
Following Cinziana Todor is Karina Gomez.
Hi, good evening. I hope you can hear me. It's so nice to be back in here. And thank you to everyone who contributed to reopening our chambers. But really, I'm here to thank Karen Rary. And I had to write this down because I will get emotional and I will forget the most important things, I would say. There's no way to adequately thank you for your service to the city, for all the time you dedicated to focusing on the issues and meetings. for all the time you dedicated to focusing on the issues and meeting with residents. You spend countless hours preparing for open and I'm pretty sure for closed-door meetings, thinking on your feet during those meetings. You spend countless hours out in the public at events, and I'm really hoping you actually got a chance to enjoy yourself, too. Here are just a few of the reasons I thank you. I thank you for all your hard work on Parks and Recreation Commission and subcommittee positions you held along the years. Thank you for all your support and endless volunteer hours dedicated to local charities. Thank you for your support, for supporting the ban on oil and gas drilling at our doorstep. Thank you for being a strong advocate for our city, parks, and open space. Again, it's very important, and we are where we are because of you, and it's been already mentioned. Thank you for dedicating hours over the weekend to host coffee with Karen meetings and connect with the residents. I've never drank coffee, had any coffee at those meetings because the conversations were so deep and so meaningful that we forgot really the coffee and all the refreshments you provided. You proved you are open, transparent, and always available to connect with your constituents. And thank you for helping reject the goodwill project. As you was mentioned, it made a tremendous difference in the quality of life of the neighbors in that area. Thank you for the thoughtfulness you brought to deliberations as well as your focus on the aesthetics art and bringing beauty to our residents. Thank you for your penetrating questions that at times have resulted in new ways of looking at the subject at hand. Thank you for being you, and thank you for being gracious to people like me who are not always nice to you. So I really appreciate you being you and staying true to yourself. And I wish you health, happiness, and all the best in the new chapter of your life. Congratulations to the incoming council members. And I would like to leave all of you with this. I hope.
The speaker's timer has expired.
Is the timer already going? Because I'm gonna have to hurry, because three minutes, I feel like I'm in a Jeopardy game. But one thing that an individual taught me many years ago was when you speak from the heart, you can't go wrong. And that was Johnny Rodriguez. I met him when I was a junior in high school. That was 15 years ago. And one thing, and I'm gonna try my hardest not to get emotional because him and his family mean so much to me. And as I stand here individually, I don't represent just myself. I represent, when people say hundreds, I think that really cuts it short of how many people and young people he's impacted. And when he's impacted an individual, he's impacted their whole families in a sense where you can't write that in paper. How can you capture changing and transforming somebody's life that goes into communities and into somebody's future? I was a junior in high school, had, I had no purpose, I felt no worth. I was a teenager that was lost. And someone that I met at that time in my life was so crucial, was so important to tell me the biggest lesson in life is you being worthy. And it's something that I didn't know. And I know I've told them thank you a lot of times, but I think it's only right. I do it publicly, and I say thank you with all my heart. Everything that I am today is because of you. You were such an important role in my life, and you continue to be that from 15 years ago till today. Okay, I found worth in being an individual, a woman, first-generation college graduate, that I was not even gonna graduate high school. I was walking and roaming around campus, doing as I was told to be in school, but never put myself in a situation that I had all this. And I think we've heard it repeatedly here, it's potential. There was potential in me, there was potential to do more in life. And that piece in my life, being a junior in high school, made all the difference. For me, not only to be like, I need to graduate high school, but I need to do more with me and my life. And not only that, that I had it in me to give back. That as much as I was titled as a youth at risk, I was also a product of my environment. And that is coming from immigrant parents. That is coming from, coming from very hard-working parents that had to work and were never around and couldn't really advocate for me because of all the limitations. But I say this today, and I say this in front of everyone, and not just for the city of Brentwood, but I think for many cities and many lives, is thank you. You have made the greatest impact in my life, and that was 15 years ago. Okay, I see you as a father figure. You and your family have opened their doors to your home, have protected me when I needed safety, mentored me endlessly, inspired me, provide me with hope. And I want to say thank you because I knew it wasn't gonna be enough time, but there's never enough thank yous and enough time to really say what you really mean for so many, not just myself. Thank you.
The next speaker is Maria Sanchez, followed by Mike Kleeman.
Good evening. I'm here to thank Johnny. Johnny, I want to thank you for leading with your heart. I think oftentimes we forget of the work that we do based on so much judgment that goes around our title or our role. But I have seen you in action, and I have seen you the work that you have done, not with, only with what we called our app-promised students, but with our community. You have really focused on our youth, and our youth are our future leaders. I am disappointed to hear the experience that you had to go through with your family through this process because we like to encourage our youth. We like to tell our youngsters that they could become anybody they want and that they should follow all their dreams. But sadly, there's still a lot of people that will not allow them to do that. I am looking forward with our new members to represent. Please continue representing our youth. Please continue doing what's best for our students within the community. You have been our voice. You have been, you have had integrity, you have been transparent. And most of all, Johnny, you have led with your heart. And I know for a fact, and I have seen it, that there's so many people that will follow you. Without even us knowing where you're taking us, we will follow you because we trust you and because you have built relationships with a lot of people in the community. So Johnny, I look up to you for remaining calm, for being respectful, and for you have taught me that regardless of what position you are at, we will still be treated differently. And so I just want to thank you, Johnny. Thank you. And like your friend said, it's not over, amigo. It's not over.
Following Mike Kleeman will be Alex.
It's been so long since I've been up here. It's refreshing to be back. And I wanted to address you, Karen, publicly because this is a special night for you. It's bittersweet. And I want to thank you for your service and commitment that you bestowed upon the community here, not just for the past six years, but for many, many years. I'm not sure there's been a councilperson that has ever put in the workload and the amount of literal hours that Karen has. And that is no small feat. I just have never seen anything like that in my days coming here and being involved in council meetings in the community. And I appreciate it because I know it's been a grind. I appreciate more than anything that Karen has always put us, the residents, ahead of any other interest or agenda. And I think that is 100% clear to everyone in the community. I haven't always agreed with you. I've had arguments with you, but I never once doubted your commitment to me and the residents of Brentwood. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for that. I'm gonna leave it with that. I think it's safe to say you've accomplished a lot. I'm looking forward to what the path lies for you ahead. I hope to visit you soon, and I hope you're not done entirely here in Brentwood. You've left the city council in a better position, and you've left the community here in a better position than what it was when you arrived in 2016, and I thank you.
The next speaker is Alex. He left. The next speaker is Abigail Munoz, followed by Cedric Moore.
Hello, my name's Abigail Munoz. I am a former student of One Day at a Time and now a teacher for Brentwood School District. I, this is really emotional as, you know, being a student for One Day at a Time, I think I was like in eighth grade at that time, 14 years old. There were many experiences, and Johnny always stood by. He was a great mentor, a great guide, a great friend. But he was that friend and guide that would always tell you the truth, whether you wanted to hear it or not. He was that other parent. Johnny's also my uncle. But he was. It was really hard to see a lot of the things that I've seen throughout social media. And it was really hard for me to talk here today because as Johnny and other people had mentioned, it is hard to keep your composure with things that are said. However, I am glad that the people that were involved with such comments are here tonight, that hopefully they will learn from these experiences. As I mentioned, I am a teacher, and I hope to teach children and the youth of tomorrow that it is always important to, you do not have to like the people that you work with or work around, but you should respect them, and you should hold your head high regardless. And I think Johnny has really shown and proven that that is possible. And with many youth and, or they're not youth anymore, adults that are here tonight, they show that love. And Johnny, you've led the community, you've led family. And it's weird just calling you Johnny and not Theo. But I appreciate you and love you. And there is not enough time in the world to say all the thank yous that we could and should say to you. You have been a, you have served this community long before I even really knew you. So just as your niece, as an ODAT member and a teacher, I am proud of you, and I look up to you, and I love you, and thank you for everything you've done.
The last speaker card I have is Cedric Moore, and then we'll go to Zoom.
I'm only gonna mention Johnny's name one time because Johnny said, spoke his heart, so we all heard that. I'm gonna tell you what an honor it is to live in Brentwood. Mayor Bob Taylor, which is your former mayor, was mayor for 14 years. Well, six of those years of his mayorship, I traveled with him. I spent time with him. I went to the mayor's conference with him. Do you realize that Brentwood is a beacon, a positive, awesome beacon in Contra Costa? We set the tone for Contra Costa. And the reason why I say that is I'm not going to go after any of you city councilmen, but I'm gonna talk to you about the diocese, what it means, the principle behind the diocese. You're sitting on the diocese. That's honor. That's respect. That's integrity. That's credibility. That's positive energy. But when I hear you bicker on the diocese and attack one another, you set the tone for all of us out here. You set that tone. So when you act that way, then we feel obliged to act that way. You set that tone, my brothers and sisters, my fellow city councilmen. I got nothing but love and respect for you because we do have a city to be proud of. And I just want to say, when it comes to the diocese, be true to yourself. Be honorable. Respect that position. And I want to talk about our police department. Our police department has came a long ways. Did you know our police department is one of the most proactive police departments in Contra Costa? We ought to be proud of that, too, proud of our city. But my city council members, remember, when I'm sitting there looking at Zoom and I see this take place and I turn it off, that's not good. That's not good because I have to be able to look up to you. You represent Brentwood. And when you sit on the city, on the diocese, please show the ultimate of respect. Thank you.
I have four people in Zoom with their hands raised. I'll start with Paris Escavito. Paris Escavito, go ahead.
Yes, hey, hello. I'm Paris Escavito. And I want to say thank you too, and congratulations to Johnny and Karen for their service of Brentwood, California. I'm not a resident, but I've performed in Brentwood last year. And this is why I'm also tuning in, is to invite all of you for a holiday special concert there in Brentwood on December the 17th over at Gigi's Palace on, I believe it's Sand Creek. And I just wanted to invite you and again say thank you and congratulations for your service to Johnny and Karen as well. Thank you very much.
The next speaker in Zoom is Kenton Sizzler. Sizzler, Kenton, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kenton Sizzler. I just want to say, Johnny, I really appreciate everything you've done for the community. You didn't deserve that at all. I'm rooting for you. I've been a number-one Johnny fan since probably '06, '07. Anyway, I just want to give another shout-out to Tony. He's gonna do a fantastic job. I know Tony's just one of the best guys I've ever met in my whole life. I'm getting a little emotional here. Don't, I'm so sorry. Y'all, just Tony for life. Johnny, you're a great guy. That's all I gotta say.
The next speaker in Zoom is Ian. Ian, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, I'm gonna start off my comment on behalf of the Youth Commission and say thank you, Karen Rary and Johnny Rodriguez, for your service to the community. We truly appreciate it, and congrats to the two new council members who will be joining us in 2023. Now, let the record show, I'm changing my comment as a normal resident of Brentwood. Karen, thank you so much for everything you have done to our community. I truly appreciate your numerous years of service. I worked at B-Fac this summer, and I love seeing your name on the placard showing how long you have truly served this city. Thank you for protecting our city by helping ban oil and gas drilling in our area. And thank you again for the numerous years of service. Now, Johnny, I want to start off by saying thank you for your service to the community. You are truly a community leader. And continuing on that, I'm sorry I have to waste time on this, but your behavior these last few months were honestly unacceptable. I know a bunch of people are defending you. I wish I could defend you, but as a resident of Brentwood, your behavior on council has been super unacceptable. And by breaking confidentiality on that incident, that was just absurd. And I hope you have learned from your lessons, and we can move on from this. And congrats to the new, two new council members. I look forward to working with them in the future, and have a great night. Happy holidays, everyone.
The next speaker in Zoom is Brayden. The next speaker in Zoom is Brayden. Brayden Hana. Brayden, go ahead.
Thank you, Margaret. Hello, good evening, everyone. Happy to be able to speak. I got called into work tonight, otherwise I would love to have been there in person and see all of you face to face. Want to start off by saying congratulations to both Karen and Johnny for all their time and service that they put into the community. And a thank you from the bottom of my heart to the both of you. Johnny, I haven't known you for very long. We, we only recently just met during this last election cycle. But everything that you've told me. I'm gonna get emotional too. Oh gosh. From the bottom of my heart, it means a lot. So many people doubted me and my campaign strictly because of my age. And you told me that it, it didn't matter. You've led with your heart the last four years. And what's happened to you is totally unacceptable. If, if it's one thing I've been saying the entire time is that these morons from the Better Brentwood Alliance are so far apart from what the actual community of Brentwood thinks. From how many people are on your side? How many people respect you? How many people look up to you? You will most definitely go down as one of the best vice mayors that this city has ever had. And I'm excited for the new vice mayor. Fingers crossed. Hopefully if my vote goes for Tony Ollerman, it's not that that matters, but that's what I'm hoping for. Anyway, not to take away from you Johnny and you Karen on this, on this night of celebration for you both, a bittersweet moment. I wish I could have been there in person, dang it. But we'll, we'll, we'll definitely be in touch Johnny. From the bottom of my heart, I really do appreciate you. I appreciate you both for all the work that you've put in to this community for all those years. And hopefully we'll see a comeback. Because you, uh, the way you were treated just blows my mind. These morons have no idea what they're talking about and it's really upsetting. And I would have loved to sit there and look them on the faces and tell them that. Anyway, that's all I got. Much love to you Johnny. I really, I really do appreciate everything you've done for me. Have a good night.
I have another hand raised in Zoom. Marisol Valles. Marisol, go ahead.
Hi, um, I just wanted to, um, make sure that I let Karen Rary know how thankful I am as a resident of Brentwood to have had her on council for all these years and part of our community for even before that. I, when, when Deer Ridge was going through so many issues, you were always there, always listening. You had no idea, you know, who I was. All you cared about was that I was a resident with a concern in my neighborhood and you were there. And listening to so many council meetings and just the depth of knowledge and information and all the research that you did. I am so grateful for what you did for our city. And Brentwood is at such a loss that, um, you may be moving, but hopefully that house won't sell because we need you Karen. The city needs you, the residents need you. And I just wanted to make sure that tonight didn't pass without saying that my family is so grateful for all the work and for really helping the residents and, um, and, and thank you. It, it, it is definitely seen every, every other week when you've been at the, at these meetings. And so, so thank you for making a difference in our lives and really taking care of our neighborhoods and making sure that we could work with city staff and that they were also, also listening to us and, and being that go between. So thank you Karen, much appreciated. And thank you. Have a great time and, um, best of luck in your future.
I have one additional hand raised. Maribel Mendoza. Maribel, go ahead.
Hi, everybody, this is Maribel Mendoza. I am Jovita's sister. But I'm not here about me or anything else other than saying Karen, the city and Far East Contra Costa is, is really going to be missing out on somebody extremely special, smart, kind and committed to doing the work for the people. Being on city council is a position for the people and voted by the people. It's not about sitting on the dais to find glory and expect a thanks or accolades. It's about knowing that you need to pull up your sleeves and actually do the work and come prepared and know about the agendas at hand. Karen, even during the pandemic was when you and I met and when it came to the Campesino community, when you knew that we needed support for them because they are truly essential and because they were out there working when everybody else was at home in quarantine, you, you basically came in and said, how can I help? What can I do? You know, you went above and beyond in helping us at Ihas del Campo and making sure that we had that support. And so for you, I mean, I just, we're gonna miss you a lot. And, um, and we're so grateful to you and the impact that you've had in the community and especially for the farm working community, um, and the insight. And, you know, it's not about developers or what friends are developers and, you know, it's about keeping that farmland and understanding what that means to our history and for our Campesino community who's still here and very much thriving. So I just wanted to say thank you. And I'm sure we'll see each other in person, um, so I can thank you some more later. So, um, everybody, yeah, thanks Karen.
I have no additional hands raised and I have no additional speaker cards.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comments and move into council discussion. And we'll, we'll start on.
I've been coming to council meetings way before I ever even thought about running. And, um, I can remember coming here. Sometimes I agree with you. I mean, actually, majority of the time I agree with you, sometimes I didn't. And I was always amazed at how sometimes you were like the lone wolf. Like you voted on your own and you lost a lot. And through all of those losses, you always kept going. It never deterred you on the next agenda item. And that perseverance is, to me, was amazing. She did spend her weekends with us. She would do coffees with Karen. And they weren't always nice. Like residents usually show up when they're upset. That's, we, we showed up a lot when we were upset. So you, you dealt with a lot of really tough topics and for that I appreciate you. I now understand more than I did before. I know you can't talk about certain things and, you know, Damian and I talk about that. Like I, I can't like, right? There's certain things that we cannot, we're like judge and jury. We can't speak about it until we get here and this is where we hash it out. And, um, I, I apologize for that frustration back then. I get it now. So thank you for always coming back and always welcoming me, even when we didn't agree. But yes, you've done a lot. And here's a little quick list. Initiated enhanced infrastructure finance districts to help pay for infrastructure without raising taxes. Initiated fire community, um, CFDs so that we would get better fire service without raising our taxes. Influenced the county agricultural land use zoning to increase the agrotourism and the agricultural surrounding Brentwood area to allow bed and breakfast. And that sits with the county now. Initiate, this is something that I'm really passionate about. Initiate affordable housing, um, to, to ensure that developers pay their fair share. So it went from two percent to thirteen percent. So now we can actually ask all of our developers to put in thirteen percent affordable housing for, you know, teachers, you know, entry level jobs or kids that come back from college. So thank you for pushing that forward too. Initiated, um, the Deck the Park event at City Park. You create community in this town. You really do. So that's another event you do. Initiated the free October dining permits to allow restaurants to continue to serve patrons outside during COVID-19. That was Karen. So all of the downtown Brentwood businesses appreciate you and I've heard it time and time again. During the COVID-19 shutdown, you initiated a hundred thousand dollars in grants to organizations to provide groceries and meals to needy residents. You initiated the sound study on Highway Four bypass for Dash. You, um, and his, and his neighbors, but I saw you, so I thought about you. You, this is an important one too. Initiated human trafficking awareness campaign for Brentwood, the Red, the Red Sand Project. Um, and we need to start that again. Hopefully you'll be around and can help us kick that off. Initiated the strengthening of the city regulations related to blight caused by closed businesses. Initiated campaign finance reform and to make it five hundred dollars per person donating during a campaign cycle to a candidate. Broad awareness of our LGBTQ plus residents by declaring June as Pride Month for the first time in the city's history. And now it's recognized annually. Thank you for that. Initiated both the Deer Ridge Landscape Improvement District as well as funding the road, sidewalk and undergrounding wires along Brentwood Boulevard. Thank you. Served on the League of Cities, um, League of California Cities Public Safety Policy Committee in seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty and twenty-two. Those take a long time. But you also served on the League of California Cities Community Service Policy Committee in twenty-one. And you served on the League of California Cities Drone Task Force, which our police officers now have drones. So thanks for doing that work. You initiated talks, you initiate talks with businesses to come to this town. One that's a buzz right now is the Costco. I think you initiated that. You, um, and this is also an important one. Initiate strengthening the massage parlor regulations. That's so important for people and trafficking. So thank you for doing that. You go above and beyond. You know, people talked about your parks. If you've watched me in meetings, you know, I'm pretty passionate about parks. Some people call it fighting. I'm passionate. I will always fight for parks and I commend what you did and what you started in this town. I think we have a fantastic park system and, um, we have a lot of great open space and it's thanks to you, thanks to you. And then you also went above and beyond and helped push that forward to measure Q so that we could protect our parks for a long time to come. Before I was even elected, I was part of a group filing, fighting for oil and grass, gas drills. If no one knows, there are companies that want to put oil and gas drills, the big horses, a mile outside of our city limits. So it's on county land and we really fought hard with the county on that. It hasn't passed and they had the most number of emails that they've ever gotten on anything. And I appreciate you joining us on that fight because you were the only council person to send in emails. When, um, before I was elected, I would send in emails all the time to five council members. And sorry about this, but you're the only one that ever responded. And that meant a lot and that, I, I try to respond to every single email and you're the reason I do that. Like you are the one who taught me how to do that and that that was important. We don't ignore a resident and, um, I appreciate that. Like, like you said, you didn't know us really when we started and we're now friends. And, um, I have a very close and tight circle. And, um, I keep it that way just because it's who I am. I'm not open. It's who I am. So I appreciate your friendship. I appreciate your support. I, I appreciate your honesty, which, you know, it's hard sometimes to hear when you're doing something wrong, but I appreciate you being there for me and for being there for our city. Thank you.
I have no idea how I'm gonna follow that. I do want to start with Johnny and say that clearly you have impacted a lot of lives over the decades. There are a lot of people that spoke very passionately today about the impact you had and, and the changes that you made to help them have positive futures. I think that's a wonderful thing. And I wish you the best of luck moving forward and doing that work because it's clearly, it's your passion and you do, you do impact lives. So, um, good luck with that. I also want to say that there isn't one of us on this council on this dais right now that hasn't been attacked in one way or another. And it's hard. And it's hard for all of our families. And my husband and my sons are very protective of me. And my mom was here, uh, a little while ago and had to leave. And, and I, and I feel when talking about Johnny's parents, it is hard. And I would, I would say to council coming in, prepare your families. Sometimes if there's a contentious issue, maybe have them not watch the meeting. It's very hard. None of these decisions are easy. And every one of us knows that Johnny, you know that, I know that. But I think when you're, when you're going into this with the heart and you're doing what you have to do, it, that doesn't make it easy. We were not elected to be easy to have an easy time with this. But, um, I do, like I said, I wish you the very best of luck and, and I hope that you can continue to impact lives in a positive way. And Karen, um, I didn't know you very well before I ran, but I, I was actually in Clara Laura's position right before running. I was a district rep for Senator Glazer. And, um, I did reach out to you for, for council and mentorship then and to, and to really get a better understanding of the workings of the city. And I mentioned a little earlier today how much I thought I knew versus how much I really knew when I got on the dais. Once I got on the dais, I basically just watched what you were doing and watched your integrity, watched your work ethic, watched how you presented your questions and how you represented the public. Even when it might not have been a popular, easy thing to do, you stood strong and you represented the public. And I can also echo that, um, I used to write to council as well and you were the only one that wrote back to me. Again, no offense, just the way it was. It's hard to do that. It's hard to stay on top of those emails and those phone calls and, and make sure that you're making every resident that reaches out to you feel, to feel heard. It's very hard, but you did. And you've continued to do that over all these years. That's huge. I don't think there's a, a comment here made about you that didn't say that, basically, that you represented people and made them feel heard. And I try to emulate that and I hope that I can do a good job moving forward. I hope that, that we as a council can continue to, to represent the community the way that you have and learn from your examples. And you've been an incredible mentor. I've learned so much from you. I don't have a list and it doesn't look like I need to. I think Jovita covered everything. But, um, I do thank you. I thank you for everything you've meant to me, to, to the city. What you taught me about the process when it was, when I was campaigning and I was dragged through the mud and people, in fact, there's, there's even people here that questioned my integrity. You were a calm voice of reason then, you know, and you were someone that helped me get through that. That's a really hard time. I'm sure you can, Patanish and Tony, I'm sure you can relate to that too. It is not easy, but you have been a calm in the storm and I truly, truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I've already had the opportunity to say quite a bit about both of these, uh, current sitting council persons. And I just want to say thank you both very much for the, uh, the work that you've done, the passion that you have shown and, uh, the sacrifice that you and your families have made, uh, during this process. Uh, we have been very fortunate, uh, in Brentwood to have, uh, council members that really genuinely love our community. And we are, we're honored and thankful to have, have both of you have, have loved us and cared for our families. And, and it's, it's greatly appreciated from my family and myself. So thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, I need a motion for adjournment to adjourn the 2020, 2022 City Council Successor Agency Authority, signee die.
So moved.
We have a first and a second. It's hard for me not to say roll call vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. We are adjourned, signee die. At this time, we are going to reconvene the city council meeting from signee die. And we are going to issue the oath of office to our new incoming elects. And so if both... Yes, Margaret, you take it from here.
We're going to do the oath for them one at a time. We'll start with councilmember from District 2, Patanisha.
Aye, Patanisha. Sorry, my daughter wants to take the oath, too. She will one day. Aye, Patanisha Davis-Pierson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
You guys got to figure out where to stand because I'm not going to get this. Aye, Anthony Orlemans.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
And if we can get a picture of you and Patanisha together before we go. And then you guys, a picture of you two, and then we will have you sit down. Yeah. We'll go do a picture. We'll get a picture of all of them together.
At this time, we are going to convene the 2022-2024 Brentwood City Council. And we call it to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Meyer.
Here.
Councilmember Orlemans.
Oh, there's. Here. Too many buttons, sorry.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Mayor Bryant.
Here. Okay, all are in absinthe, and we do have a quorum. At this time, we will open public comments. My turn to you, Margaret.
We'll take public comments in the council chambers, followed by Zoom public comments. If you're in person, file a speaker's card with the city clerk on the form provided on the counter in the back of the chambers. If you're excuse me. If you're participating via Zoom, please use your use the raise your hand feature in Zoom during this item to speak under public comment. At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda or request for future agenda items, new requests. Please save your comments for any other items that are on the agenda for that part of the meeting. Written comments submitted prior to the meeting will be made available on the city council agenda's webpage. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. While we encourage your comments, state law prevents the city council from discussing items that are not on their meeting agenda, and if appropriate, staff will follow up on them directly. I have no speaker cards for this item. I do have one hand raised in Zoom. And I will call on Danny Dorman. Mr. Dorman, go ahead.
Okay, I think I'm off mute. I'm surprised. Okay, my friend, Paris Escobedo, called in earlier because he wanted to be involved in the city of Brentwood. He knew what was going on. He's coming out Saturday, and I'll talk about that in a second. But he loves how we operate, and so when a Latin Grammy Award winner and from a family of, of, boy, the Escobedo name just goes without saying, Sheely, Pete Escobedo, Coke Escobedo, so on and so forth. He's showing an interest, because he knows what Brentwood can be. And that is the jewel of Far East County. So with that, and he asked me to help him out this time, so tomorrow I'll be picking up the Toys for Tots box and bringing it to Gigi's Palace, which is on 161 Sand Creek, number A, which is way in the back behind the Technology Center. It starts Saturday. Doors open at seven. The show starts at eight. We're making this the unofficial after-party for the new council members and the just-released council members. And Mayor Bryant, if you bring your instrument, you never know. So on behalf of Pete Escobedo, the Escobedo family, and more importantly, getting art and artists out here in Brentwood, I look forward to seeing you guys Saturday. If you have or want any information, call 925-698-9454. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
At this time, then, we will close public comments. And we will move into business items. Item E1, the election of a member of the city council to serve as vice mayor for a term of two years. And the city manager, Tim Ogden, will present this item, or the city attorney, Damon Brower, will present this item, since his microphone is green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, I will give you a very brief report on this item tonight for the election of the vice mayor. The city council's meeting rules of procedure. Talk about the vice mayor responsibilities. These include exercising the mayor's duties and powers when he's absent, with the mayor serving as a spokesperson and representative of the city council, and assisting the mayor in anticipating issues that may warrant a special meeting. There are no special rules governing the selection of a vice mayor, other than that the election has to occur, excuse me, at the meeting when new council members are sworn in after the general municipal election. So tonight, the vice mayor is elected for a two-year term, and the election requires three affirmative votes. That concludes my report. As I said, it was very brief. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. If there are no questions, it would be appropriate to take public comment and then elect a vice mayor.
Are there any clarifying questions of staff at this time? Seeing none, at this time, we will open public comment. Margaret.
I have three speaker cards for this item. I have Rod, followed by Kathy Griffin, followed by Susanna Todor.
I'll just go ahead and read. In considering the position of vice mayor, it seems like it's most important to have someone who's already experienced on city council, who is familiar with the policies and procedures, so they can be ready to assume the duties of the mayor in his absence. Brentwood is fortunate to have a well-qualified and well-rounded choice for vice mayor and council member, Susanna Meyer. Councilmember Meyer has served ably and well these last two years, and has demonstrated so many of the traits that will make her an excellent vice mayor. Councilmember Meyer represents my district, and I've spoken to her many times on the issues that matter most to myself and the majority of homeowners and residents of Brentwood. I'm always pleasantly challenged by her depth of knowledge on every topic and by her obvious preparation for council meetings. I always come away from those conversations more informed, find myself challenged to answer questions I'd not even thought of. Susanna considers every side of every issue and how it affects the people who must live with the decisions made here. I come to most city council meetings and have time and again seen Susanna Meyer make the right decisions for the people of Brentwood. She's tough, fair, smart, compassionate, and always gives the first consideration to all of us who live, work, or commute from, raise families, and play in Brentwood. She's not afraid to make the right decision, even those times when it may have cost her personally. Susanna can always be trusted to do the right thing. This is what we need in Brentwood. Councilmember Meyer is also familiar with the state politics that are the most important factor for Brentwood in our current legislative environment, having worked in the office of a state senator. She's a great asset to our city council for that. Also, as someone who serves the community in her professional life, she shows the characteristics of empathy, caring, fairness, and justice that draw people to her. She's not a politician. She's one with this community, and it shows. It's impossible to overstate what an asset this is for a vice mayor. Susanna Meyer is the clear choice for this honor. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kathy Griffin. The next speaker is Susanna Todor.
Good evening again. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to propose Susanna Meyer to be Brentwood's next vice mayor. She is the most qualified. As the previous speaker mentioned, she has a lot of experience in public service. She's been a voice for our residents for the last couple of years, and I'm sure even before that, through all the organizations she's involved with at local level. Also, she proved that she reads and understands all the issues that are presented on the city council agendas, and she prepares. She does a lot of research for every single meeting. She is involved, as I mentioned already, with nonprofits and resident groups, and constantly has the pulse of the city. She's very well-spoken, clear and transparent in her communication, and that will make her a great spokesperson and representative for our council and our city overall. Thank you.
The next speaker is Greg Robinson.
Nope, it's not working. All right. Hi, everybody. I'm Greg. I also would like to suggest that we nominate Karen Susanna. I've done that numerous times, and now I've done it publicly. I apologize. Susanna. Susanna, not only she has the experience on the council, but with her experience working for the county senator, for Senator Glazier. Also, her nonprofit experience that she has. And I think she'd be a great candidate. It's also her birthday. What a great birthday present. But most importantly, Karen used to work, oh, my goodness, I'm so sorry, Susanna. I am so sorry. I apologize. She also worked for me for a few years, so she's well-trained. So I think she's the best candidate, and I recommend that you guys nominate Susanna Meyer.
The next speaker is Olga.
So I would love to nominate and to suggest nominate that we go with Pat Tanesha Pearson. I'm not gonna bore you with her list of credentials. I think we've all seen that. Not to be negative, but you've had your chance, ladies, and it didn't bode so well the last 12 months. So enough said with that, I would highly suggest, I would highly suggest, it's my opinion, that we we go with Pat Tanesha Pearson, just based on her skill set coming into this, coming into this job alone. Thank you.
Thank you for being patient. I have no speaker cards in person. I do have one hand raised in Zoom. And I'll call on Brayden Hayner. Brayden, go ahead.
Hello, me again. Obviously, I'm not even in the in the room right now. And there's some tension. I heard the tension and the craziness going on, because you're not allowed to have a difference of opinion from these psychopaths, morons. I've already, ah. Anyway, I want to, once again, reaffirm my support for the only choice for vice mayor, and that should be Sir Tony Orlemans. Mr., or I guess, Councilman Orlemans knows the city of Brentwood. In my short time of knowing him as well, from the campaign trail, this guy is a genius when it comes to things that the real people of Brentwood want. He's spoken to thousands of residents himself in the last couple of months. And I agree with Olga. The last year, we've seen that, you know, a couple council people had their chance, had the opportunity, and they swung and missed harder than the Giants swung and missed at Aaron Judge. So I think that Tony Orlemans is the only choice for vice mayor. Pat Tanesha comes in second place. I love Pat Tanesha. All the nice things she said about me. She's got the greatest resume I've ever seen. She's overqualified for her council job as it is. She's a great woman. But not to take anything away from her, but I think that Tony Orlemans is the only choice for vice mayor, and I hope we make the right decision. Yeah, God bless our troops.
I have no additional hands raised and no additional speaker cards.
At this time, we will close public comments. We'll move into council discussion, and if I may, the position of of vice mayor, as was described by our city attorney, that was a very concise description. There are there are a lot of things that go into the position, and not the least of which is the necessity to meet with potential companies, employer groups that are coming into our community. It's very important to to have those connections, those relationships. And and having been in that position myself, there are a lot of things that it's important to know how to do, and I think that it makes sense, I've always thought so, to have a sitting council person fulfill that position, simply because regardless of what anyone has done, again, I've been through this learning curve. There are so many things to learn when you first get on council that it's important to have someone that is is ready to take over running a council meeting. I'm sure that everyone up here could do that, but also understands how every department in the city works, how the city works effectively with the county and the state, and and has those connections and and relationships already. So having said that, I would nominate councilperson Susanna Meyer to be our next vice mayor for the city of Brentwood.
And I would happily second that.
We have a first and a second. Vote, all in favor, aye.
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 Aye, sorry.
Okay, it is unanimous. I appreciate all of your participation, and all the words that were said about our new vice mayor, our current, our current vice mayor are are true. I have the utmost respect and admiration for her as a person, as well as a council person. And I'm looking forward to having her. She is also personally my district representative, and I'm thankful for that, and I'm looking forward to working with her in the next few years as our vice mayor. We will move into item E2, a resolution approving and authorizing the city manager or designee to execute a professional services agreement with the Institute for Local Government Consulting and Governance Workshop Services for a total not to exceed agreement amount of $16,000. And our city manager will present on this. Tim.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As described in the staff report, this is to give authorization to me to execute a contract with the Institute of Local Governments. They do workshops throughout the state, especially with new council members, on best practices about governance. And the scope of work that's included in the staff report describes how they would conduct assessment interviews with each of you, identify high-level what your goals and expectations are, roles and responsibilities, and provide in those workshops best practices and against some governance tools, facilitate training on effective meetings, developing leadership, culture, those kinds of things. So they proposed two different workshops, one with the city council, and are holding a date if you approve us to move forward on January 26. And then again, with the planning commission, starting on February 7, concluding with a joint session with the city council held in these chambers on the dais here. We'd fit both of your bodies on here and have that additional training. And with that, be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any clarifying questions of staff?
Yeah, the agenda states that on June 28, the council requested this. Can you please, I watched it, and I might have missed it, because it was a long meeting, but I don't remember. I don't remember asking for this. I know we asked for a joint with, because our biggest issue is land use. We asked for a joint meeting for training on land use. So how did this one come about?
Two ways. So one, the council had discussed with some issues with the planning commission, they needed additional training. And there was a desire to have a joint session with them to ensure that you guys are on the same page and could ensure the same expectations going forward. The other piece of this was not requested by the council, but it's a service that the ILG provides, especially when there's new council members, starting a new two-year term, to get off to a good start, get on the same page with coming together, understanding each other's goals and expectations, and again, best practices.
Okay, we have to all take, a lot of us work full-time. And we have to all take three days off, my vacation time, to go to the League of Cities. I will not be able to attend a day meeting. I don't have any more vacation time. Is there the opportunity to do this in the evening?
They have proposed a six-hour workshop to be able to get through everything. I didn't think that we could start at seven and get through that in six hours.
We could do a couple of evenings, but if it's during the day, I will, I'm going to be honest, I will not. And it's fine, everyone else can attend, but I, because of time constraints and days we have to take off for the other three-day training, I will not be able to attend. And that sucks, but you know, I don't know what else to do. When we asked for it, I think we expected it to be an evening workshop. So just FYI, if we could move it to the evening, that would be great. But the daytime is going to be difficult.
Sure.
Could I ask how this compares to the League of City new mayors and council members training that we are, from what I understand, all attending?
Sure. The California, League of California Cities invites presenters to present on different topics of interest to those presenters. Generally, good orientation overview of different city municipal issues that would come before the council. This training would be personalized for our city council. So when they're conducting of assessment enters with each of you, would identify what your concerns are, what your hopes, expectations are, and any, again, best practices as they've observed at council meetings and provide that training directly to you. So that would be the main difference, be more personalized.
And what is the goal of the assessment?
To hear from you directly what your expectations are for service on the city council during the next two-year session and provide all the governance tools that would be helpful to the council in conducting effective meetings, leadership culture, those kinds of things.
And is, would it be possible to break it up into more than one session?
If that's the council direction, we can certainly query them. They are very busy doing this in other cities and also have a role at the League of California Cities Conference. And they're coming out of Sacramento. They proposed a six-hour session. If that doesn't work for the council, we can certainly go back to them and see if they can break that up into different sessions.
And is their recommendation in person rather than virtual?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It would be nice to see, I know we have a lot of evening meetings coming up outside of our council meetings. Can we look at a calendar of everything we have going on? It'd be nice to see that and see how this fits in because we have a lot of stuff.
It'll be a busy month, January, February.
Yeah, that would be great, too.
Sure.
Well, all of my questions have been asked and answered already. So if there are no more clarifying questions of staff?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution approving and authorizing the city manager and designee to execute the professional service agreement with ILG.
Okay, we have a first, but before we do that, we're going to open public comments. And turn it to you, Margaret.
We'll take public comments in the council chambers, followed by Zoom. If you're in person, please file a speaker card. If you're participating via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I don't have any speaker cards. And I have no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, we will close public comments and open council discussion. It is, I think it's really important for the whole council to be here, if possible. I would really like to find out if they have the ability to adjust. This is, this is a question. Councilmember Mendoza, what would be the earliest you might be able to normally meet?
I can usually get off by five, so be here by 5:30. Yeah.
If they would be willing to, let's see. That, that's a very late meeting. Not that we haven't had late meetings before, but ideally with all the families and everything. If we could find out, if we could have that.
And I think the other benefit is that we're really big on transparency. And when we've had, remember we have those financial meetings during the day? The public feedback is they can't watch it because they're working. So it's also a benefit to the residents to be able to be at home in the evening and watch. And I think this one's going to be important for them to be able to watch and have public comment in as well.
So January 26th at 7:00 PM is the regular standing Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. And that will be their first time to meet in person. And so we were concerned that if we started any later on that date, we'd have to find another date. So that may lose us in the window of opportunity with ILG to get this training done in January. But we can certainly look back and see if there's another night that works for them and hopefully start as early as possible if that's the council's direction.
I hate to bring this thought up because it might get approved. But we have had meetings on Saturdays that, over the years, on things that were this important. Again, I'm not taking back what I just said. But if that's something that our council might consider, if that was an option.
I would consider a Saturday. And actually, we might get more people showing up if it's on a Saturday, too.
I don't know if ILG does meetings on Saturday or not.
I don't know. Alexis, you've talked with them in the past. Do you know if they do Saturday or?
Yes, they do. I don't know when they're available, but they do Saturday trainings.
Great.
That's, I think those two pieces of information would, I'd like to have personally. Find that information out. We do have a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry, prior to seconding or should we amend it with potentially?
An alternate motion?
Yeah.
So yeah, if we get authority to go ahead and execute the professional services agreement, that's a start. And then we can go back and negotiate with them some better dates that would work better for those who are working and maybe even a Saturday if that's desirable.
And if I may also add, and get a chance to talk to the city manager about this, but if you're going to be meeting on a Saturday, ILG may need to charge the city more because it's not on a normal workday. So you may wish to also authorize the city manager some additional signature authority. This is well within a signature authority. I think it's being brought to the council. Normally, the city manager could just sign this contract without coming to you. But given the topic, I believe that staff wanted to make sure the council was, this was acceptable to the council. But if the council's part of the motion could include authorizing the city manager to sign it within a signature authority. And then that just covers it. Clearly, if it goes up too high, he will be back to you to let you know.
Councilmember Davis Pearson.
First, you. Did it go? Okay. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to execute the professional service agreement with ILG with the caveat that the city manager or designee has signing authority for the consulting and governance of the workshop for an amount that may exceed $16,000. Are we saying that? Thank you.
Do we want to add to the motion that they're going to ask about evening possibilities and Saturday possibilities? In the motion?
I don't know that it's necessary because if it just doesn't work, we have
Do we need to?
This amount here, but it doesn't mean it has to be executed. If it doesn't work, it just doesn't work, but.
Yeah, but I mean, I don't know, he likes us to be pretty specific when we ask. I mean, you've asked us to be specific in our motions, so I don't know how specific you want it.
So we've heard the discussion, so if that could be included in the motion that you want to either look at for a Saturday date or only do an evening meeting, it will be recorded. So those who miss it during the day can certainly catch up later as well.
So I can further amend my motion to go back to the approval of the resolution authorizing the city manager to have signing authority to execute the professional service agreement that may exceed $16,000 to check in and see if this is available on the weekends or after 5:00 PM.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
It is unanimous. Moving into requested, request for future agenda items. Are there any council members wishing to have an agenda item placed on a future agenda? A new future agenda request?
And I'm not sure if this is an agenda item or it's something, because we've done it before where you haven't brought it back to us. There's two bills that I would hope that we as a council could oppose, I mean, send letters in. The first one is actually supporting, and I don't have the bill number, I can get it to you. It's Mary Uche's bill, changing petty theft from $950 to $400. So we get a lot of resident concerns about all the stealing that's going on. So now we'd be able to do something for $400. So I think maybe us as a city sending it. Also, I mean, you send us copies so we can send it into the committees that it goes through before it gets to the final vote. And then maybe from the police department as well. I think the more letters that they get, the better. I was just telling councilwoman that I had a meeting with the gentleman who runs Safeway in California. And one city told them to just shut their stores. They can't do anything about it. And she was serious when she told them that I don't want to shut stores in Brentwood. So I would like to do anything that we can to support this bill. The second bill is, I think it's Senate Bill 4, 2022. It's the Yes in God's Backyard bill, which will allow churches and schools to build housing everywhere. I just, I think it's another, we've talked about again, them taking local control away. So taking away local control, building wherever they want to build. I think there's, this is dangerous because any entity can actually start a church. So if anyone wanted to start a church, you can start a church and start building anywhere. So I think it's a slippery slope. I think it probably should be more specific. But I'd like to, that one would be in opposition. So we don't just oppose things, we support some, we oppose the others. So those would be the two agenda items. And I don't know if it needs to come back or if that's something that just can, because it's your signature on it, Mayor. So I don't know if that's something.
Yeah, we have a policy that the League of California Cities has taken a position and in consultation with the mayor, if he concurs with it, then staff is authorized to sign it and we send a copy to all the council. If it's in conflict, we'd bring it back to the full council for consideration. We could certainly schedule it for your all consideration as well.
After what happened with the League of California Cities, I don't trust that they have our best interests in mind. And I know a lot of cities are starting considering leaving the League of California Cities. So I don't know if we should be dependent or do we just feel like it's the right thing to do?
If I'm permitted to speak on your recommendation, I'm waiting for.
Actually, a future agenda item request has been made. At this point, no further discussion would be had on this. It would come back to the council at the next meeting for further discussion. So you can get into the merits of this. And at that time, I believe staff will be able to see what the position of the league is. And then the council could have a discussion on that. With regard to the policy on that, that's a separate discussion on how letters of support or opposition are written without going to council. And that's one of the criteria, but there are other criteria as well besides just that one.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone as well, thank you. I regularly watch planning commission meetings and have seen several times where commissioners ask for a future agenda item that I have not seen come back to the commission for review and discussion. So I want to clearly understand what their process is for being able to bring agenda items to future meetings and know how and understand how council can support their efforts in this way. Thank you. Is that enough? Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Okay, if there are no new future agenda item requests, we'll move into item F2.1. Future agenda item request from councilmember Meyer and councilmember Mendoza for city council discussion of and possible directions to staff related to the preparation of a report on Chromium 6 at our city.
I believe the council makes that request.
This is our, I see what has happened. Okay, now there we, okay, so those.
Thank you. I brought this a couple of weeks ago. Actually, I reached out to Mickey a while ago because a resident with an environmental background reached out to me and said that there was some concern that this issue was being presented in a way that was really concerning and they weren't sure that it was something that residents were going to get caught up in and worry about and and really essentially just be scared of based on what they were reading. And so the resident suggested that we kind of come forward with a report about it and really get a true understanding what it means, what we've looked at. I reached out to Mickey at the point. Mickey sent a really comprehensive report. And when I read it, I thought, this is great, but I want the residents to be able to comment on it and ask questions about it. And so really what I would like is for Mickey, for your report, to maybe to come to the public, come to an agenda so that residents can understand what this issue really means. And it's clear that it, you know, it's coming back, it's still being heard in the public. And so I really want people to understand if there are risks, what they are, where we stand with the state mandates and established values there. So I would like to bring it back for that, so it's more of a public discussion and residents can get a better understanding of what's going on. Thank you.
And I just echo with Susanna, sorry. And yeah, there's a lot of chatter out there. So let's just, you know, one of the, one of the things that Superintendent Volta said to me is like, you know, when we cut the chatter quick, it helps a lot out in the community. So let's just cut the chatter. Are people being hurt? Are they not being hurt? Is there anything we can do? Is there nothing we can do? How do we compare to the state, all of those good things? Let's just figure it out. And if we can cut down on chatter, that would be fantastic. And thank you for taking care of, answering that other resident about water. I got your email today, so thank you for that. That's it.
I believe Mr. Mayor, at this point, his public comment?
Yes. Just so you will know, we're operating on brand-new stuff up here. That's not how we used to do it.
I like the old version.
And, and so I'm feeling like a brand-new colt trying to get my feet under me here. So at this time, we will open public comment.
We'll take public comments in the chambers, followed by Zoom. If you're in person, file a speaker's card. And if you're participating via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I have no speaker cards and there are no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, then we'll close public comment, move into council discussion. I love facts. And I love the fact that we have the opportunity to have experts in their field weigh in and let us know the facts on this. And so I would love for that opportunity to come back to council, for us to present that to the community and have their input and discussion as well.
I, fortunately, I got the opportunity to meet with Mickey also and talk about this topic. And having that information given to me, presented the way he did, made it very clear to somebody who had no idea what they were talking about or had no idea about the topic before. So having a presentation for the citizens to get the information I got would be amazing.
I agree.
Is there any further discussion regarding this? If not, can I get a motion on this item?
I'd like to make a motion that we allow for approve staff time and talent and effort and everything else on this discussion item for Chromium 6 to come back at a future council meeting.
And I will second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous and it passes. At this time, there is one more motion that I am going to need, and that is a motion for adjournment.
I make that motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second.